... members who were in a risk management meeting that was taking place before this to wrap up that meeting and get down here, so we'll start as soon as they arrive.
[laughing]
[inaudible]
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 All right, well, thank you so much, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilman Flurry is gonna give us an invocation followed by Councilman Jenkins leading us in a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. O kind heavenly father, we give you praise and glory, and we ask now for wisdom and knowledge, and lord, we pray for compassion and mercy for those especially the least among us. Bless this city, oh god, this administration, and this government, god, that we might be responsive to the people. We pray and ask in thy holy name, amen.
Amen.
You place the flag and join me in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, madam clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bradford.
Present.
Mr. Everson.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Corbin.
Here.
Mr. uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Flurry.
Here.
Ms. Lynch.
Here.
And Ms. Goldman.
Here. All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference?
Second.
That's a motion by Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Corbin. Everybody please cast your votes.
Second motion.
And... That motion is...
Mr. Chairman, who's seconded the motion?
That was seconded by Councilman Corbin.
Thank you.
And that motion is adopted unanimously. Okay, and we are now at awards, recognition of distinguished guests, and communications, starting with council member communications, and if it's okay with everyone, at this point in time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules so that we can take up resolution 18, paying tribute to the life and legacy of Judge Charles Petrus. And it's a motion to suspend and seconded by Councilman Bradford, and we could cast on that. It's like that passes unanimously.
Okay, well, so I guess I'll take the lead here, Mr. Chair. At this point, what I'd like to do is invite everybody from the Petrus group to come up forward to the microphone, and we'll have Mr. Thompson, our clerk of court, then read the actual documents, and hopefully have some comments, but would like to recognize everybody here in support of Judge Petrus in this case, to come forward to the microphone, if y'all would. Don't be bashful. I know most of you, so...
Follow him out, then.
You just line up over there, so in really one of the things... That must be in front of a microphone. One of the reasons to do it this way is so that the people that are actually at home watching on TV can see the family members, and that's an important part of this.
They said that you could have comments, maybe that's why they didn't get up.
Yeah.
[inaudible]
This is a resolution to pay tribute to the light and legacy of Judge Charles B. Petrus, and to otherwise provide with respect or to by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Whereas Judge Charles Brickman Petrus was born in Shreveport, Louisiana on May the 27th, 1940, and graduated from C.E. Byrd High School where he was a superb athlete. He was an honor graduate of Tulane University and Tulane University Law School. And whereas Charles Petrus was a champion of governmental public service, in addition to good governments, Charles Petrus believed that governmental entities should value, include, and embrace all citizens. The adoption of the 1978 Shreveport City Charter was a giant step toward an inclusive city government, and Charles Petrus, who served on the first city council, was ideally suited to ensure that the new form of city government was successful. Whereas, as Shreveport City Attorney from 1982 through 1986, Charles Petrus unfailingly protected the interests of the city of Shreveport, and he was fair in the administration of his office, including his hiring practices, and he treated everyone with respect and dignity. And whereas Charles Petrus was recognized by his peers and the public as a smart, formidable, and principled lawyer and judge, he clerked for the Second Circuit Court of Appeal, he was a partner in the established law firm of Wilkinson Carmody Petrus, and he was a senior partner in the law firm Petrus Greer and Hader and its successor, Petrus Greer and Frazier. He served as a member and past president of the Shreveport Bar Association, and was a member of the House of Delegates of the Louisiana Bar Association for 20 years. He was appointed to the mandatory continuing in legal education committee by the Louisiana Supreme Court, and he was elected as an appellate judge to the Louisiana Second Court of Appeal in 1996, where he served until he retired on January the 20th, 2012. And whereas Charles Petrus was a dedicated family man, his love and respect for his wife, Betsy, was widely known because he talked about her all of the time, and he adored and was proud of his three children, Christopher, Ashley, Allison, and his grandchildren. Whereas although Charles Petrus was very successful in his professional and private affairs, he will be most remembered by friends, acquaintances, and the citizens of Shreveport for the respect that he gave and the genuine kindness he showed to everyone he met. The citizens of Shreveport are indebted to Charles Petrus because he showed us how to live together with dignity and respect for each other. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Shreveport in due regular and legal session convened, that the Shreveport City Council pays tribute to the life and legacy of Charles, Judge Charles B. Petrus, because of his contributions to the citizens of Shreveport as city councilman, city attorney, and judge on the Louisiana Second Circuit Court of Appeal, and for showing us how to live together with dignity and respect for each other. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be executed in duplicate originals, with one original presented to his wife, Betsy Chandler Petrus, and the other filed in perpetuity in the office of the clerk of council for the city of Shreveport, and this resolution has been signed by all council members.
Would you like to make a motion to adopt?
Second.
That is a motion by Councilman Jenkins, seconded by the chair, and all votes are cast, and it's adopted unanimously.
Slide into the microphone. On behalf of the city council and the city of Shreveport, present this to you. He's been a... He was a mentor to me, obviously, a first district seat city councilman, and a longtime friend of mine, my family, and obviously a great relationship there. And extremely important that we take this time to honor those that have set the precedent for what we get to enjoy today in our city and our cities. So, time to do this. Now, if anybody would like to take this opportunity, if they have any... I appropriate, if anybody wants to make any comments up here, get some people that I've known very well professionally, and certainly that can attest to what he's done here in the city, if either you have comments down on that end, or family members would like to say anything at this point.
My name's Allison, I'm Charles's youngest, and it's interesting being here, I remember coming here back in 1978, well, I guess it was the other place. The Scottos were there, I got to miss school to see my dad being sworn into the city council, and then we went to TGI Fridays, which is now the Blind Tiger, it was a great day. My dad loved the city, he didn't love the phone calls that you city councilmen get past 8 o'clock at night, but he wanted to do what was best for Shreveport, and he struggled sometimes with what the law said and what I called common sense, but he worked hard to do what he thought was right. He would be honored today, he's in a better place, but if he has a microscope down here, I know he's smiling. He didn't seek reelection because he wanted to spend time with his family, and your uncle-in-law, Aaron Selber, always asked me, "So is your dad spending time with you?" And he did, he was a great dad, so... I guess, if I could say anything, it would be, um, thank y'all for continuing on with the city, the place we call home, and I hope and I pray that... That all of y'all can be like my dad, so, thank y'all.
Thank you.
This was a very kind gesture, thank you very much.
Members of the council, I preceded Charles as city attorney, and I succeeded him as city attorney, and I'm sure the council was better served by him than me. Charles, if Charles is not, was not the finest person I ever knew, he was certainly tied for him. There's not anything that, I mean, he was the kind of person that if you needed to entrust with anything, from your children to your dog, especially if you had a black lab, because he always had his black lab, but he was such a wonderful lawyer. His service to this city was truly public service. I'm not sure how much he wanted to be the city attorney. He was a very successful private practitioner, but he was coaxed into public service by one of Mayor Tyler's predecessors, and it was a wonderful four years that he ran city government, or ran the city attorney's office. I've never met a finer person, I've never met a finer lawyer, for sure, and it's my pleasure to be here today, and I thank y'all for the recognition that you've given him. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I had the great privilege to succeed Charles on the city council, and I just want to share one story that he told me, we used to run together at lunch, and we were running, and I was asking him kind of what it was like to be on the city council, and he said, "Well, you know, you get asked to do some strange things," he said, "A couple of weeks ago, a lady called me, and she said that a raccoon was under her house, and what was he gonna do about it?" And so Charles got a garbage can and a garbage bag, and he crawled, now, you've got to remember, Charles Petrus was about Oliver's height and a little broader, and he crawled under that house in Broadmoor, and I just have this picture of him staring down this raccoon. So, I didn't get the end of that story, but it showed the kind of commitment that he had to his constituents, and I was honored to succeed him, and honored to know all of these people, they're a fine family, and they had a fine father, and the city had a fine public servant.
Now, I'm gonna put Art on the spot, obviously Art knew him quite well, and he was the author of the document, so I'd love for him to share an experience, if he would, or, you know, what you came up with to put it together.
Petrus was one of the finest persons that I have ever met. I think, I always think that my father was the best man that I ever knew, but Charles was very close to that. He did not have any black friends, or white friends, or any other kind of friend, he just had friends, and we were all subject to his jokes, we were all subject to the pranks that he pulled, especially Mary Mudge, who's hiding back there, she was a favorite of his for his jokes and pranks. I won't tell any of them here today, but you can ask anybody who knew him, and they have a Charles Petrus story, because he, even though he was a very serious person, he did not take himself seriously, and it brought all of us in and made us love him, and I'm happy to have known him.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you all so much for that, and as somebody who was a bit, a bit too young to really know Mr. Petrus in the way that many of you had the fortune to, it is, it is an honor and a privilege to hear those stories, and they still resonate around these halls quite frequently, he's certainly left an impression, and I think we all understand why he's worthy of our honor and recognition today. Now, we do have in a moment, two presentations that are scheduled for this portion, but yeah, but what I'd like to do is if the council members have any other...
Could you recognize Mr. Scotto?
Yes, absolutely, in fact, I was about to recognize Mr. Flurry to do that.
Mr. Scotto, just one second, please. Madam Mayor, members of the council, and ladies and gentlemen, audience, I'd like to recognize my mentor and my hero, Mr. John Scotto, who served on the council in the past for Southern Hills area out there.
He was on the first council.
On the first council. Mr. Scotto, it's a delight to see you today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, and do any other council members have any other recognition of distinguished guests at this point in time? Seeing none, I will acknowledge, so I'm aware of two presentations, the first of which, I believe, Councilman Jenkins requested...
Oh, from...
In Oakog?
Correct. Kent looked at me surprised when I looked at him, he said, "Well, no, not me, I'm sure that was Brian or the administration." We're here, we're here. But let me say, I mentioned this, and you may have a little broader approach, but one thing that, maybe at our last council meeting, I'd seen some things that suggested that Texas was really taking a lot of leadership in this I-69, and, you know, I was a little concerned frankly that we aren't actually putting it on the forefront of our consciousness as maybe we should. So that was kind of, did a small presentation looking at some material that's available on the internet, and how well organized they seem to be, and frankly, how poorly organized or in the social media we seem to be. And so, stems from both, update on where we stand today, and I've gotten some pretty good reports that we're doing pretty well in terms of it, but I do want to raise the awareness in our community and the region about its importance, and its, I guess, how close it really is to coming to fruition, or starting to be able to actually do something demonstratively about furthering its cause. So, that was the nature of why I asked about it.
Okay, no problem. Kent Rogers, Executive Director, Northwest Louisiana Council of Government, 625 Texas Streets, Suite 200, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. Boy, I did that pretty good. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, welcome back, Brian.
Thank you.
With I-69, yes, we are making some progress in the state of Louisiana, and yes, there are some issues dealing with Texas. Within the state of Louisiana, there are three sections of independent utility that we are associated with. The first of those is section of independent utility 14, that goes from Eldorado, Arkansas, to the Houghton area, tying into I-20. We have an environmental record decision on that project, the estimated project cost for that is about $1.2 billion. We do have some earmark money that is associated with all the projects in Louisiana, and I'll get to a request, a couple of requests that we've made on that in just one moment. SIU-15, of which we've typically called the urban section, is the portion from Houghton to Stonewall, wraps around the backside of the base, crosses the river around the port area, cuts down, ties into 49, and then heads out to Stonewall. That piece would also help finish, you know, a good chunk of the loop connection, bring the inner loop down, tie in 69, and then we basically would have a controlled access facility loop around the city. We do have a record decision on that environmental document at this time, estimated project cost for that section is about $1.17 billion, still getting a lot of money. We have requested of DOTD to use some of the earmark monies that we have within the state of Louisiana to put together a corridor preservation plan, since we don't have enough money to buy all of the right-of-way at this time. We want to look at some different measures out there that could help us preserve that corridor. If there are some hardship cases, yes, go ahead and purchase those hardship cases, try and put together some agreements similar that's been put together with the port in terms of land use versus air rights use of the property in the corridor, where the roadway would go, potentially looking at some overlay districts or some zoning things that may be able to, we may be able to do to preserve that corridor now that environmental document is done. Just looking at a myriad of things, we want to see what we can do and what's available, not only to the city council, but the parish commissions, and the MPCs, and everybody up and down, anybody that's going to be associated with this project, how can we keep that corridor from getting infringed upon? With section 16, that's the portion that goes from Stonewall to Tenahont, Texas, ties into US-59 in Tenahont, heads down US-59, Texas is upgrading to interstate standards as quickly as they can, basically starting in the Houston area and working their way out, but doing some, I guess, loops around some of the smaller cities and some other overpasses and interchange work along the way to upgrade 59 to interstate standards. There, the big issue with Texas is much the same as the portion that went from Eldorado to Houghton, Louisiana took the lead on that environmental work because of the, Louisiana had the most mileage for that section of independent utility. Texas, with this section of independent utility, Texas is supposed to play the lead on that environmental document, and it, the original environmental process got tied up with what was called the Trans-Texas Corridor several years back, which was basically a mile-wide corridor, putting everything from rail to streets to roads to utilities and everything in the world in it, and that basically bombed out and fell apart. When they picked up the ball again and started doing some environmental work, they pretty much stayed within the state of Texas, didn't include state Louisiana. We have made a request of DOTD to, one, approach text dot, and if they're not going to start that environmental process on that section, let's go ahead and do it. Well, we, you know, somebody's got to step up to the plate, and somebody's got to do it, let's go ahead and start that process within state Louisiana. The second part, which causes a lot of concern for a lot of folks, is that you see the signs on US-59 that say future I-69, or I-69 in some areas. Along the whole corridor from Port Huron all the way down to the Mexico Line within Texas, there are about six spur, spurs along that route. One of them in Arkansas, one of them in Texas, that portion in Texas unfortunately is that portion basically from Carthage up to Texacana tying into US-2 Interstate 30. Texas gets that completed well ahead of us getting things completed, yeah, that's going to drive some traffic that direction and drive some of it away. The long-term goal of the entire corridor is steel, you know, Fort Huron, Indianapolis, Memphis, Shreveport, Bossier, Houston, Galveston area, and on out. So we are still, this area is still part of that mainline corridor, yes, there will be some spurs out there that connect to other areas that could potentially cause a little friction in this area specifically, but we're moving forward. The good part with I-69 is that we, now that we have the rod on the first two pieces in Louisiana, that we can start doing some things to preserve that corridor and get that well underway. The first section that we will complete of that will be the bridge, the Red River Crossing, for multiple reasons. One, it need, we need some help down that area with traffic and whatnot. Part of the earmarks have a, have some wording, some language in them that references the Red River Crossing, therefore they're held to doing things with the bridge and the river crossing, and it just makes sense to start there, to begin with, helping to tie the port in to some of those other roads and whatnot. With that, I'm gonna jump to 49, or y'all want to do questions on this part first, or...
I have a couple of questions, I don't know if anybody else does, but I'm happy to go first.
Okay.
So, the amount of earmarks, that's state earmarks or federal earmarks, and what's the...
They're federal earmarks, specifically held by the state of Louisiana, we have about $20 million right now. Again, they're full, they're federal earmarks. Again, they're full, they're federal earmarks. Most of them came through Senator Landry's office. As Vitter and McCrery and Fleming were providing funding for 49, she continued to provide the funding mechanisms and whatnot for 69. Keep that process going. Again, it's not enough to buy all the right-of-way or move us forward, but we can use some of it to do some of that corridor preservation and right-of-way work.
And then, I guess, who prioritizes where that 20 million goes in terms of right-of-way preservation? Does NLCOG do it? Is it L.A. DOTD? What's the actual governing body that's...
Ultimately, it would be DOTD with concurrence from federal highways, but they, they wouldn't do anything without local consent.
Sure, but I mean...
On the project, right, right.
But really, DOTD is probably taking the lead on the deal with some support from you and...
Correct, correct.
Agreement from the feds, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then, with regard to, I mean, how soon that could start? Are we months or a year away from some of that acquisition, or what, tell me what the timeline?
We have submitted a request to DOTD. They have said, yes, they'll provide that funding and work towards identifying which pieces and whatnot. To get that formal agreement in place, unfortunately, it's taking forever to get agreements, legal agreements out of DOTD right now. We're looking at probably six to eight months before we have that agreement in place. At that point, the first thing we would do is overlay those corridors over base GIS and ownership data and whatnot from everyone. Quickly identify those hardship-type cases that could be done, and potential other cases like, we have an agreement with the port right now to preserve the corridor through the property, their property. They still have ground use rights, but they won't put any permanent structures on any of that area. They can use it until such time and whatnot. We'll look to see if we can do other, other agreements like that out there for other things, too.
And then, I guess...
Nine, nine months to a year.
Nine months to a year. Okay, now, not that this is necessarily the form to opine on what goes on in Congress, but I've read about some, we'll call it congressional steering groups that are involved in this I-69, and unfortunately, I didn't see anybody represented from the state of Louisiana. Do you have any, is that dated material? Certainly, Vitter's new role would seem to put him in a strong position to influence some of those dollars.
That should be dated material because all, the, both senators and at least three congressmen have always been on the I-69 caucus within, at the US level. We also have, there's also a, I guess you could say a somewhat private sector side of that also, that's the I-69 Midcontinent Coalition. Mayor Walker is actually the chair of that coalition, and there's, I think, five, I believe it's five vice presidents, I think they're called, within the state of Louisiana. Each state in the coalition has a, has five vice presidents. Bruce Easterly being one of those, and I, to, I, to be honest, I can't remember who they all are off the top of my head.
No, and is somebody on Vitter's staff specifically engaging...
Yeah, we've worked extensively with Vitter's staff on not just I-69, but transportation legislation as a whole. You may or may not be aware that Senator Vitter was one of the four main authors of the existing bill that we're under right now, MAP-21. And I know that we worked extensively with them. I know the Chamber worked extensively with them, and several folks within this area have worked, have consistently worked with he and his staff on transportation legislation over the years.
Because I think he's now the chair of one of the committees that has a big infra...
Correct.
Maybe Small Business Infrastructure Act.
It's, uh, Environment and Public Works or something to that. I don't, I don't remember.
There's something that is, this is one of his specific, that falls under his...
Correct, correct. Senate side hasn't split under two different committees. He's chair of one of them.
Okay, okay. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I appreciate the information, and certainly over the last four years, those veterans of us up here have learned a lot about highway projects and how timelines get moved around and things, and a lot of, a lot of things out of our control. And I know we've heard a couple of times that, you know, oh, we'll be able to start buying land in a few months, and I appreciate the update that maybe 12 months from now, we'll be able to start buying some land. You know, they say a picture's worth a thousand words, and I'm looking at the I-69 Texas Alliance website right here. And, and that's a pretty strong picture.
And that, that's the picture that I keep sending to DOTD and saying, regardless of what they're telling you, your emails, they're doing different.
59 going straight up to Texarkana, and if you get your magnifying glass out, there may be a little dotted line that cuts across Northwest Louisiana. But that's a, that's a telling picture. Who takes the lead in, in getting not only our congressional delegation, but local organizations? NLP, Committee of 100, Chamber? You know, I don't see, I don't hear verbiage from those groups, and frankly, I've even heard some negative comments about the I-69 project. Does NLCOG take that? Does...
Uh, we can. It's typically been a myriad of different organizations that have, that have, you know, really, like with I-49, we had the I-49 North Coalition that all the different entities were members of, that kind of was the, I guess you could say, the rah-rah cheerleader type of thing. With 69, we really don't have a statewide group doing, or a state or local group doing that. It's more of that international coalition. And historically, by having, you know, prior to Mayor Walker being that chair, it was John Decker others, so there was, you know, looking at it on that level, there was always a pretty strong voice there.
I just...
Yeah, we kind of, we probably need to do a similar thing as was done with the 49 North Coalition to create a 69, a local 69 coalition.
I just know, we fight a lot of battles by ourselves, and sometimes we fight, maybe you're battling against our sister city across the river. But if there's ever been a project that affects numerous parishes and an entire part of the state, maybe the entire state, I mean, this is a battle everybody needs to get behind and put it to the forefront.
It's another I-49 North.
We've got to find a way to do that.
Long-term goal, it's another I-49 North.
Yeah.
But, let me even go once, I want a website. I mean, what, who's going to take charge of, I mean, let us get something at least that you could, if somebody Googles I-69, they might follow on Louisiana.
We'll put out there, we'll go ahead and put some stuff on our website and what we've got, and what we can get a hold of. We have created a new website called NLCOG Listens that has a bunch of different projects under it. And there is a section called Mega Projects that we've got, we've put some of the, some of the information on 49 in there, and some of the work on the interloop in there. We'll go ahead and start putting 69 stuff on there also.
Maybe we could hack this website.
But I mean, really, the thing is, truthfully for us, and I speak to the three of us who may have been advocating this for some time, you know, it's difficult to dispel the rumor, well, it's going to be another 40 years before we get I-69, if we don't even have a website that speaks to it. And that, I mean, if you say, I'd love to be able to say, I-69 is reality, we're going to be able to start, you know, buying land to preserve a corridor, et cetera, et cetera, and then say, go to the Louisiana I-69 website, and you can see the route, and you can see communities, and who's tying in and all. It just tells a much better story than we're really able to tell right now.
Got it.
You can see it's a little personal.
I-49.
Okay. I-49 North, if you've, section from LA-1 to the Arkansas line is now open. You can actually take I-49 all the way up to Arkansas, wrap around Texarkana, and go about five, 10 miles north of Texarkana before it narrows back down again. Within Louisiana, the, we are well under construction on the phase from the two last sections of the traditional 49 North, Sections J and K, which are the portions from LA-1 to MLK, and then MLK to 220, if you're driven up in that area. Anytime recently, you see lots of dirt moving, lots of things happening. Those two sections should be completed in FY16, that's state FY16, probably the latter part of that. But it is well under construction and well underway, and we'll have that done. We ran into, as y'all were well aware, with a lot of the work that y'all do, we ran into a little staff who with a burning landfill and had to have some redesign work done for part of the interchange, but that's done and over with, and they're moving forward on it. With the intercity connector piece, we are still in the environmental process for that. Because of some of the concerns that were raised, how the public hearings roughly a year and a half, well, a year and a couple of months ago now, we are looking at the interloop 220 alternative, having to bring that up to the same level of study as the four build-through alternatives would be. That includes, the preliminary work that I've been shown includes adding additional lanes the whole way around. The concerns, the real concerns there come into play with the Crosslake Bridge, because it's not just as simple as adding lanes in that area. It's, you got to do all the drainage work and, you know, the special drainage system underneath the bridge and all that for the environmental concerns. Also, we'll have to do some rework to the two major interchanges, the one at 20, 220 now. If you drive on there, you got to slow down to about 40 miles an hour for the one curve. That would have to be completely redone to make it a free-flow interstate. And then, the biggest problem is the interchange with the interloop and 49 as it exists now, being that that would become the through interstate, you have to have, again, federal highways requires it to be a free flow. And the problem there is, to add those additional lanes to that ramp, you basically have to reconstruct it because the ramp from the interloop, northbound interloop to westbound, northbound 49 to westbound interloop is the upper level of that, and there's absolutely no way to add additional lanes there. So that pretty much has to be reworked. The problem with working that is they're looking at, how can they do that and not lose the Linwood Avenue exit? If that road were to be built under today's standards right now, with the interloop and 49 interchange, we would not have the Linwood interchange or the LRB Road interchange, because they're just way too close. So we've got some issues there that they're trying to figure out the best ways to solve those issues. They also did some economic studies, some cultural resource studies, a couple of other things that are typically done once you only have a preferred alternative. We were asked to do them in all, basically all five of the alternatives. We're hoping March, April timeframe, as soon as we get concurrence from DOTD and federal highways, have another round of the public meetings, and we'll go from there.
Councilman Lynch?
Well, I just have a couple of questions. What section are we on right now? Are we on 5A, B, C?
We are, yeah.
Which one?
5A.
5A.
This is the, is this 15 minutes total for everybody, or is that per council person? I'm just trying to be clear.
It is supposed to be about 15 minutes.
Total?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Per person?
Per person.
Okay. I just want to know, not for this meeting, but I'm going to get my 15 in later. Okay, Kirk, I would just have a quick question. Now, you, because we've taken a lot of time talking about 69 and 49, so you just basically deal with federal, federal roads, interstates, the NLCOG?
Anything that's classified as a federal collector and above. So basically, not local streets, and not some of what people would consider a collector street in the area. They're not federally classified as a collector, but anything that's federally classified as a collector and above, the federal funding would be available for, yes. And we, we coordinate those federal dollars.
So you're basically talking about interstates?
Uh, no. I guess, another example of a couple of projects about to go out is the Uriate-Kings intersection improvements. That's federally funded through, through this program.
Okay, what about, what about Highway 80, Greenwood Road?
Uh, the, the, actually, the Greenwood at Pines intersection improvements that were done, those were done with some of those same dollars that Uriate-Kings is about to be done with. We've done some shed road widening. There's been some improvements to Buncombe Road that have been done, various different projects around the area. There's several different pots of federal funding, that different levels of those roads qualify.
Within the city? Within the city?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, do you have a place where those are identified? Is it on the website?
We have two, two things. One is the Long Range Transportation Plan, and then the other is called the Transportation Improvement Program. An acronym for those, the TIP. The TIP identifies those projects that should be let within the next three to five years. And we can get that to you.
Okay, would you be able to break that down for us by, by council district? Those projects that have been...
Yeah, yeah, we should be able to.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And Councilman Bradford, I believe, is next?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned you took a pretty good time in describing what could happen as it relates to alternative routes. The interstate route is really going to be a controversial route. Are you familiar with this group, Loop It?
Yes, yeah, and that's the, that's the reason for looking, for bringing the interloop 220 option up to that same level of study as what the build-through alternatives are.
And you, you, did you meet with them and they describe you an alternative to...
Yes, yes, that's the alternative that's, that's being looked at.
That's being considered.
Correctly.
Now, let me ask you this, then I'm going to ask you about Choice Neighborhoods impeachment. You described the work that need to be done to I-220 to bring it up to, I guess, to the standard of two interstates coexisting.
To bring it up to, what, what, what federal highways and DOTD have said is, that is an option you're going to, this is an option we are now requiring you to look at. And you have to look at it in the same realm that the build-through alternatives are being looked at. You can't, we have to bring it to where you're comparing apples to apples.
What is that?
The build-through alternative to bring it to free-flow interstate standards, we have to look at, how do we make the interloop 220 also free-flow interstate standards?
Right.
That's what the consultants are working on now.
Is there going to be a price comparison?
Yes, yes, yes. They have, they'll have comparisons, the, they've got a huge matrix chart that they look at, which will have all the traditional environmental concerns, they'll have the social, economic, environmental concerns, and they'll also have the cost for the various different options, and a couple of other things with that.
And in regards to Choice Neighborhoods, you're familiar with Choice Neighborhoods?
Yes.
I was at a MPC meeting a couple of weeks ago, and they seem to be very concerned about this interstate running through the city, and they seem to be hesitating about creating some improved, I mean, some, some legislation to allow Choice Neighborhoods to move forward. Is there a, is there a contradiction to what we can get done here?
I, my personal belief is no, that there's not a contradiction. Choice Neighborhoods, when, when Ms. Moore and I spoke to the MPC about Choice... Choice Neighborhoods, when Ms. Moore and I spoke to the MPC about Choice Neighborhoods, I think people need to realize that it's not just one project within that area. Choice Neighborhoods covers all of Allendale, all of Leadbetter, and portions of the west end of downtown. That's a great big area. It's not just the project that the Housing Authority is working on. It's several other projects within that area. And there are, I know Ms. Moore was applying for, and we actually sent in a letter of recommendation for the application that she's putting in now for some of that implementation. Because there are projects that I believe can work together and well with both of these projects.
Okay.
I think it's a, the two of them together, to me, would be a huge win-win for this area.
I agree. Okay, and finally, I just wanted you to say that project, I mean, that the Choice Neighborhood project would not be impeded or delayed because of the time that we're spending getting these studies done?
No, because there's several different pieces to that. To the Choice Neighborhood, there's a lot of different pieces.
And that, and the drive-through interstate would not at all compromise?
The specific project, the, and I think I have a, I thought I did. Like the Heritage Place project that Bonnie's working on, no. It's not anywhere, it's not in the corridor, it's not affected by any of the build-through alternatives. It's several blocks away from those alternatives. I know that she's got, that there's a couple of things for around the Millennium Studios area, some for closer to the Shreveport Commons area, so no. They're not affected directly by any of those build-through routes.
Okay.
The Housing Authority project is, but not the ones.
You mean the Renaissance that's going up now?
The Renaissance at Allendale project, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would request that I could visit with you, and I want to bring Dorothy Wildom, if you're familiar with her.
Yes.
And I'll call for an appointment, okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Seeing no more requests to speak at this time, I believe that, Councilman, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
15 minutes.
It was. And so, in trying to keep us moving along here, I know Councilman Bradford had invited a guest to speak, and I would like to call him up at this time, Mr. Calvin Young. And I believe the folks in the booth have a presentation set up for him. I think everything should be.
Mr. Chairman, let me introduce Mr. Young. Mr. Young is the founder and CEO of PowerPoint and Associates Healthcare Consulting. He has over 27 years of experience as a healthcare administrator, researcher, and innovator. His body of work includes health system management, disparities, research, community development, and healthcare systems development. I met Mr. Young, oh, maybe 15 years ago, and I was impressed with his work. I feel compelled to bring him here today to make a presentation that I think we would all be benefited from. I'll reserve my remarks at the end so that he could make his presentation, but I think his presentation would speak for itself. Thank you, Mr. Young, for coming.
Well, thank you so very much, City Council members, and Madam Mayor, and all the honorable council members. I was invited by Councilman Bradford, Willie Bradford, to do a presentation to look at the health disparities, not only health disparities, but economic disparities between zip codes and the black and white community here in Shreveport. And this first piece of data you see right here is just the population data. That was back in 2012. That's the population of Shreveport at that time. As you can see, the white population is 41.2 percent, the black population is 55 percent. And I think since 2011, Shreveport has become a mostly minority city as of 2011. Here's some more data that is very indicative of what's going on with the disparities here in Shreveport when it comes to economics. This is a median household income for 2012. Here you see, in the tall graph, that 55,000, that's the median income for whites here in the city of Shreveport. And as you can see for African-Americans, it's only 28,000. So it's basically doubled. And this is the median income, it's not the per capita income, but the median income is the income that you would look at when you're looking at disparities. Also, this is some more population data here. Now, what we have right here is some data of the distribution of the median income for the white household. Now, this is a very important piece of data right here. For the median income for the white household is between 75,000 to 100,000. So most of the population here in Shreveport, white population, is within this income level, 5,300 of them, okay? So it's very important to remember that and keep that in your mind, between 75,000 and $100,000. Now, let's look at the African-American population, and you can see a big disparity. Here you see the median income for African-Americans, where most of them fall. Most of them fall between $10,000 and $20,000 a year. Nine thousand or so of them fall between $10,000 and $20,000 per year. So it's a significant difference in the overall amount of people, black and white, that are in different income levels. So as you can see, of course, the white population is a very high income level. This is a slide, I'm not sure if you can see it too good, but this slide basically looks at a zip code. And what we have here is zip code 71107, which is the Cooper Road and Martin Luther King area. And this zip code is 86 percent, about 86 percent black. And what we have here is the median income is about $18,000 for this particular zip code, and it's only about 14 percent white. So I'm going to show you a comparison between the white, predominant white and black zip codes in the city of Shreveport. Here we have, again, 71107, popular zip code up on the Cooper Road, and you see that the median income here is only about $18,000 a year. The next zip code is 71106, and this zip code is reflective totally the opposite of the demographics. You have only about 13 percent black and about 86 percent white in this particular zip code, and the median income in this zip code is over $130,000. So as you can see, the zip codes with predominant African-American populations, the income is significantly less, and the zip codes with more white populations, the income is a lot higher from a disparity standpoint of view. This is poverty levels, looking at race with poverty levels. This is zip code 71107 again, and this is a predominantly 97 percent black population, and the poverty level, the people below the poverty level is about 41 percent. Okay, so in this zip code, 41 percent of the people living in this particular zip code is below the poverty level. Let's look at another zip code, now, again, reflective, totally different demographic. This is a 90 percent white zip code. This is around, this poverty level is only 7.3 percent. And this is in the same zip code, but it's in the area of Blanchard. So it's 90 percent white area, same zip code, but the population is different. And as you can see, the poverty levels, income levels, follows basically the race of the individual. So here, it's only 7.3 percent of the people are below the poverty level at this same zip code that we have, where he was over 40-some percent below. Here's another one, here's another one, 71106 and 71108. This is a 99 percent population of black population, and it's about 57 percent below the poverty level in this particular zip code. So wherever this zip code, the streets that surround this zip code, this community is very impoverished. It's a 99 percent black community, and the poverty level is atrocious, 57 percent. We look at another zip code, 71106 and 71115. Those two zip codes combined, which is 98 percent white, and the poverty level, again, is only 4.95 percent of the poverty level because of the zip code and because of, it's a predominant white area. So you can see the disparities speak for themselves pretty much when it comes to economics. Now here, we have the population right here, the unemployment rate, we have 71103, 85 percent black population, employment is about 16.3 percent. That includes Leadbetter Heights, St. Paul's Bottom. You've got 71115, which is about 80 percent white. The unemployment number is only 5.1 percent southeast Shreveport and Westwood. And you have another population, 71104, zip code 75 percent white. Again, that's the Holland Fairfield Historic District, and the unemployment rate is about 8 percent right there. This is just a few numbers on the state of the black businesses. The total number of firms in Shreveport businesses in 2014 was 16,000, a little over 16,000. 18 percent of those were black-owned, and 26 percent were owned by females. And this will be my last slide here. We already got one more. This example shows a real difference in investments. This shows that poor people who don't have as much money to invest, what can happen in their life. This information was given from, was abstracted from the Quicken Loan Data. At $1,000 at 10 percent at 30 years, your return is $17,449. $500, the same at 10 percent for 30 years, the return is only $8,725. So it shows you, people that have less money have less money to invest, and they have less money to make a good quality of education and quality of life for the individuals. But this is another piece of important data I'm going to show you that talks about loan investments. The following is a difference in interest paid over the life of a Class A mortgage loan and a poor credit Class B mortgage loan. Class A, which is $100,000 at 6 percent for 30 years, the interest is $115,838. But at a Class B loan for someone who has bad credit and don't have as good a credit standing, usually poor people, at that $100,000, it's at 12 percent over 30 years, their interest is $270,300. So it's significantly different, and that shows you that with people who are poor, basically have a harder time in investment and in the loan industry and personal loans. That's pretty much it for the presentation. Do we have any questions?
I certainly appreciate the presentation, and want to say that I think it does speak to a few things that I think we're glad, as a city, we've invested in in recent years. Things like the Bank On program, which helps people who are underbanked or unbanked, and some of our minority areas certainly are, you know, subject to that category. And that has been thus far a very successful program, and, you know, so I'm glad the city has taken on initiatives like that. Things like investing in the Minority Supplier Institute, implementation of a fair share program. None of these may be the silver bullet that solves all problems, but at least we are, you know, beginning to look at these things on a holistic way and making investments towards trying to solve some of these disparities. So certainly appreciate you sharing that with us today.
Chairman. Thank you. Go on.
Yes, Councilman Bradford.
Again, thank you, Mr. Young, for that very valuable data. And I just want to say to the city, as we have reviewed the data, if anybody have any doubts about the data, I think they can seek additional information. But there's a saying that said, "A chain is only as strong as its weakest link." Likewise, I feel a city cannot be no stronger than its weakest citizens. And I don't have a magic bullet to address past disparities of what and why we are at this point, but I think as this city is transitioning, right now, we have four majority black districts. In four years, we may have five. And we cannot continue to have a city to where the majority of the citizens are not participating in the economic mainstream of this city. My plea to the City Council and to the mayor over the next four years is that these numbers will improve in a way that all of our citizens feel like this city is indeed a city which is receptive to the diversity in which we are. We have to put forward thinking and leave that backwards thinking behind us, because, like Atlanta back in the 60s, who developed a theme, and I don't even know we have a theme, the theme, we have a theme, that theme is still existing, whatever time I, that's great, sit up to the side, we need to put that in the garbage can. We need to establish ourselves as a city, like Atlanta, who says, "We will be too busy to hate. We're going to be too busy to confront our differences, but we're going to accept the diversity in which we are, and we're all going to live in harmony and peace and make a livelihood, and the quality of life and the living for all of our citizens would be accepted and would be put forward." There are examples of cities who didn't do that. We could just go to Jackson, Mississippi. You know, people talk about Detroit, Michigan. But I'm just saying, we have an opportunity here. It's almost a crisis, and in crisis, there are opportunities. So I'm just asking that we embrace these opportunities, that we see forward with this new administration mayor, with this new council, and let's work together to make things happen for all of our citizens, and try to dismiss and just eradicate those horrible sad numbers that you just presented, Mr. Young. Again, thank you for coming, and I appreciate you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. At this point in time, seeing no other requests from council members to speak, we will move on to 5B and C, awards in recognition of distinguished guests by the mayor, as well as any communications relative to city business.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. We have three announcements and one presentation. We'll do the announcements first. The first one is, we're pleased to announce that we were able to save the city $2.3 million over the remaining life of general obligation refunding bonds issued in 2005. The bonds were priced at an annual debt service savings of about $475,000. The bonds now carry an interest cost of 1.5 percent, down from the 5 percent. We closed that transaction on last week, so we're excited to announce that to our citizens today. Our second announcement, I'd like to say thank you again to the councils for agreeing to allow the city of Shreveport to be a title sponsor for the annual North Louisiana Economic Partnership Meeting held last week. We welcomed Joe Deisman, the former NFL great, as the keynote speaker. Thank you to those of you who were able to attend. And our third announcement, we'd like to extend our hearty congratulations to our very own Brian Blade, who celebrated two Grammy Award wins this week as a member of Chick Corea's Trio for Best Improvised Jazz Solo for the song Fingerprints, and for Best Jazz Instrumental Album for Trilogy. Blade was also nominated for a Grammy in the same category as Chick Corea for his album Landmarks by Brian Blade and the Fellowship Band. Shreveport is so very proud of its native son. And lastly, we want to say that we're proud that Shreveport is experiencing its lowest crime rate in more than 30 years. And at this time, we're going to ask Chief Willie Shaw to come up and do a presentation with more details on our crime stats.
Thank you so much. And I do have to echo how incredible that we, Shreveport has such talent that comes from this community, and we had somebody who was literally competing against himself for a Grammy. I mean, that is, that is something to be proud of.
Yeah.
Although I kind of wanted landmarks to win, because it referenced a lot of locations in District B.
It is. You're very proud of that one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just give us a second here to get set up, and we will be clear, concise, and with expediency, go through our crime stats for 2014.
While y'all are setting up, I just want to mention, I know that we do have a lot of citizens in attendance today. I know that a lot of people are signed up to speak on the little free libraries. If you have not turned in your speaker request form, please do so to be in the corner here. I have a list of those that I've received. There's 12 of them, so we're going to call you up in order. Apologize that sometimes our meetings aren't as swift as they might hope to be, but we will get to you, and I have received all that has been turned in so far, but if anybody else needs to sign up for one, feel free.
But Vanna White has nothing on those two right there.
That was excellent. Councilman, you want to always remember, my guys are armed. After yesterday, I am well aware of that. Thank you for giving me time here today to kind of go over the stats for last year. Thank you for giving me time here today to kind of go over the stats for last year. First of all, before we get started on statistics, I just want to explain to you a little bit what that means to us. We're well aware that no matter how low we say crime is, that we had over 10,000 Part I crimes last year, and each one of those represents somebody being a victim of a crime. We're well aware of that, and we do not take that for granted. So when you hear us talk about crime lows for the last 39 years, that doesn't mean that we live in utopia and there is no crime. It just means that we're trying to do better at what we do, which is to decrease crime. Because it's the same as saying that the unemployment level is at zero, but you don't have a job. It doesn't really matter about what I say about crime if somebody just broke in your shed and stole your lawnmower. So we're going to go with it from that particular angle as we start. But I'd like to tell you that we had over 278,000 calls for service. Again, 278,000 calls for service that we did this past year in 2014. And out of those, we issued about 8,000 traffic citations, I mean, 48,000 traffic citations. We've worked about 8,000 car wrecks. We made over 16,000 arrests, whether that be arrests that we incarcerated someone or wrote misdemeanor summonses. But when you take the big picture of that, you talk about 278,000 calls for service on one hand, and then the other hand, we took the law enforcement action and about 16,100, but percentage-wise means that about 94% of the time, nobody went to jail. Nobody went to jail. So when you look at the police department, I know the perception is that we arrest everybody. We really arrest very few people in as many calls as we make. And I just wanted to point that out because sometimes perception is that we do a lot more arresting than we actually do. We do a lot more other things than we do arrests. If you would, I'll give you a packet. We would go to your Shreveport Police Department Part I Crimes, and it's a page that looks like this. A lot of markings on it. And we'll start there at the very top, and it's the homicide number. We're one less homicide this year than we were the year before. We had 29, and we, and 13, and we had 28 and 14. That's very unfortunate, but I've been here since 1990, and back in those days, we're having 80-plus murders a year. So we're way, way down when it comes to homicides. But any loss of life is ridiculous when it's feloniously done, and we fight that every year trying to keep those numbers low. The next one is forcible rape. And I'll tell you about rape. Rape is up 47%, but that's a matter of reporting. That's the most underreported crime there is. And if you think here in Shreveport that we only had 125 rapes, you're wrong. There was lots more. We try to get people to report those. And when you start talking about rapes, about 80% of those are rape, people are raped by known victims, and they just don't report it. So you'll never hear me gripe about that. The next one is, personal robberies were up 16%, business robberies were down 41%, and so forth and so on. So overall, robberies were up 5%. Start talking about aggravated assaults, down 1%. Burglaries were down 11%. As we move down, thefts were down 1%. And when you get down to the grand total, 10,728 Part I crimes, 10,728. That number has not been reached, under 11,000, has not been reached since 1975, 39 years ago. With that least amount of crimes. And we move on to the next page. The city is broken down into four areas. And at the top, it's kind of a legend that kind of lets you know, as council people, where you are. But Area 1 would be basically to the north. Area 2 would be basically to the east. Area 3 would be basically to the west. Area 4 would be basically to the south. So when we broke it down into categories, the actual biggest decrease in overall crime for the year was Area 3, which would be mostly west, Mortown, Queensborough, places that you wouldn't think would be the lowest crime in the city. But it is. So when you take a look at that, those things, it kind of puts things in perspective because the highest would be in Area 2. Now, it's all driven by different kinds of crime. Area 2 is highest because of theft, mostly theft from automobiles. We try to get our citizens to help us out, and they have been, by locking their cars. And that would help us out greatly, and we preach that all the time. And one of the things that we'll continue to preach, but that was the highest area of increase was Area 2, which is your Highland and South Highland and those areas. But it's not violent crimes, it's theft that leads that. And plus, you have southeast Shreveport that has all the stores, retail stores, and that increases the theft as well. And as we move forward, we talk about the crime that actually, the overall crime, the 10,728 number. Now, it's the lowest in 39 years. If you look back to 1994, 20 years ago, there's been a 56% decrease in crime, which is unheard of in the law enforcement arena. A 56% decrease in crime means that half of the crime is gone. And if you look back 10 years ago, there's a 36% decrease in crime. And if you look back five years ago, there's a 13% decrease in crime. And as we get better at what we do, which is obviously, that's what we're doing, crime just lower and lower and lower. That was the time when our keystone was to be 1,000 Part I crimes are below every month. We've dropped that. Now we want to be below 900. And we have things in places, we have a lot more officers, and let me give kudos to the council because you guys have always given us, approved our budget and allowed us to do some of the things that we do. So give yourself a hand, and don't want to mess that up, guys, because that's a big part of it, that we're able to fund some of the things that we do. As we move into the future, we have something called Raids Online. If you look at one of those signs up front, I believe it's that one. It stands for Regional Analysis and Information Data Sharing System. It does a system where we always fight the perception of crime. When you live in your neighborhood and you think there's crime rampant around you, there was never any way for us to actually show it to you. But now, you can go online, Raids Online, or you can download the free app, you click on Shreveport, type in your address, and it will tell you the kinds of crimes that are going on on your street, in your neighborhood, in your area code, in your zip code. You'll be able to find anything you want, to include sex offenders. That's also on there. We're online as of today. So if you want to type that in, anyone, anywhere, you can type that in and find out, and it is as real-time as we can get. Within two weeks, it's updated. And this is something new that we're sharing with the public because we always get that deal about, we don't really know what's going on. But now you have an opportunity to put it on your smartphone, download it on your laptops, and just enjoy any computer that you have. Now, we have certain goals that we're going to try to do this year, and the thing is, the biggest thing is always is to reduce crime. We're doing some more innovative things, and I know around the country, the big push was to put cameras on everybody. We've done that downtown, we've done that for several years. We're going to increase the number of cameras that we have. And we're also going to start using social media more. We already have Facebook site, we already have, we already use Twitter, and we're also getting an app. As we move forward, we're going to take advantage of technology that's available to us to do better at what we do. But in a nutshell, guys, I just want to share that with you. Crime is down. If you have any questions, I'm willing to answer them now.
I have Councilwoman Lynch, but before I recognize her, I do want to just briefly say how much I appreciate, and I read an article recently, I believe it was in the Shreveport Times, it may have been in another outlet, about the importance of community policing. And I want to say from experience, I've seen the positive impact that community policing and that the efforts that the Shreveport Police Department's Community Policing Division has, you know, made to improve situations in our neighborhoods. Sometimes it is about communicating, sometimes it's about identifying potential crimes before they happen, sometimes it's about teaching people a better way to talk to one another and to deal with situations around them. And those type of things seem to really build a level of trust in the police department, and I have to compliment that whole effort. I think it's been a good success.
All right, thank you. We're fully dedicated to community-oriented policing. We actually have a unit that's called community-oriented policing, which you have about 43 people assigned to it, and that's what they do day in and day out.
Yeah, and it's a good impact, I would say. So Councilwoman Lynch.
Yeah, I need somebody to fix my computer, get this app on here for me. I'm just going to here. I just wanted to say that, I mean, congratulations. I had, the numbers looked great, the numbers were great. And, but I did have a couple of areas I wanted to bring call to your attention. I'm getting a lot of calls about activity on Monk House Drive.
Yeah.
After midnight, let me say. I'm not sure what's going on. I don't, my creeping days are over, so I'm not out at 2 o'clock or 3 o'clock in the morning, but I'm hearing, getting calls about a lot of foot patrol going on on Monk House. I need some extra attention paid in the Hollywood Heights area. I'm getting some feedback about that as well. But certainly, congratulations, and I know the officers are happy, you know. My father was a police officer detective, SPD, and a safer city certainly causes the children of police officers to rest a little more calmer, trust me. I was one that sat in the window waiting for my daddy to come home to make sure he came home.
Right, and your dad was actually a pioneer at the Shreveport Police Department. He was the number five African-American officer that they hired.
First black detective, so.
Yes, he was, very first black detective.
I have a lot of fondness for the Shreveport Police Department, but congratulations and just convey that to the entire force, that we appreciate the work that they're doing. I know they're working hard. Those numbers don't come by accident. It's because they're out there keeping us safe and making sure that we have a safe city, so I appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. We're well aware of Monk House Drive, we're working on it all the time, and we will look at the Hollywood Heights. And you're right, you mentioned the fact that, you know, you see all of the captains and you see all the assistant chiefs, you see me around, and it's the guys actually in the patrol cars, in one of those blue uniforms, that make the difference. Because when you dial 911, there's a couple of things you can be assured of, that nobody in a white shirt is going to show up, but the one in that blue shirt is going to be there.
Mr. Chairman, let me just say this.
Yes. And then after that, I should recognize Councilman Fleury, is after you, Councilman Bradford.
Thank you. I appreciate your work also. As you know, I had the experience of going through the Citizens Police Academy, and until you see firsthand the risks and the threats that are always before you, you assume that policing is easy. But I understand what, you know, what you do, and I appreciate what you do, and the statistics speak for themselves. I wish you the best and continue in that direction, whereas you see most of the country, not most, but a great part of the country, is dealing with police incidents when it relates to black males. We haven't had that experience here recently. I contribute to you, chief, and your sensitivity toward policing, you know, especially within the African-American community. I just trust that we continue to be sensitive, that training of the officers would be forefront as it relates to adversity and cultural issues, so that if incidents happens, they would be trained to handle those properly without letting it escalate into something where deadly force would have to be compromised. Again, thank you for your work, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Bradford, and you're correct. We have had some of those incidents in the past, but that's constantly on the forefront, what we talk about, how we interact, how we're supposed to defuse and de-escalate these situations, and that's our primary duty, is to defuse and de-escalate. And so we bring it out in the forefront, we constantly talk about it. And on the other side of that, dealing in other parts of the country, the police department does not reflect the demographic makeup of the community. Here in Shreveport, we do. We are the most diverse police department there is anywhere close in our region. We reflect our community.
Thank you so much, and Councilman Fleury.
Chief Shaw, I too want to say, what a great job you and your staff did. When I ran for office, that was the number-one thing that I was hearing about, was community policing. But I can rest assured to the citizens of District E that you are changing that philosophy and you're getting out into the community. Your department has done nothing but what I've asked, and I appreciate that, and I hope you continued success in these numbers that you go on forth, and just want to say thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Councilman Fleury.
By the way, you did play at Woodlawn, right?
I did. When I was a child, I played at Woodlawn. And, but I want to echo some of the things you said. The Community Earned Policing Bureau does a great job, and we depend on those folks to do so much, so often. You would think that they would get tired or burnt out at some point, but they do not. And when everybody else is seemingly having the time to go home, and normally it's 5 o'clock, you can always go by COP and somebody's in that office 7, 8, 9 at night, when they normally get off at 5:00. And then, not because they want to get overtime, they want to get whatever needs to be done to take care of that citizen for that day. And so we want to also give them praise as well.
All right. Thank you so much for that wonderful report. Did you have anything else that you want to share at this time?
No, I just, I also want to say thank you to Chief Shaw. We've already said that, and this is one of those updates and progress reports that we promised we would bring to the council each month.
Another welcomed report. This one's very welcomed. To see that that number fall below 11,000 is substantial. That's very, that's very important.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Bummet had a comment.
I just, real quick, I did hear that Chief said that you won't see a white shirt come out, but I have to say, when we had those shootings over in Queensborough, I sent Chief a message. And I did get a phone call back from the chief, and I think that was outstanding, and I appreciate that. To get a call from you and not from someone else, I think that was outstanding.
Oh, absolutely. And I say not a white shirt because most, everybody that's in a white shirt is a captain or above, and that dues them responsibility, doesn't reflect their making calls. I do have one captain that you can't hardly keep him out of car, you know, and remind him, "You're not a patrol officer, you've got about 100 that work for you." But they do a good job. But when I say that, it's that the guys in the blue shirts, that's their job, and somebody in dire straits and screaming on the phone, "I need help," they're on the way.
Well, I appreciate you. And what district do you live in?
I live in District, I live in your district.
But now, where did you grow up?
Well, I grew up in Beeb.
There you go. Beeb produces great leaders. Now, we appreciate, we appreciate that, and certainly I'll echo that the police department is very responsive to our requests and concerns for our constituents. Okay. Mayor Tyler, did you have anything else?
That's it for us, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, we have reached reports. I've not had any requests for any property standards. Does anybody have any property standard issues that you need addressed at this time? If not, I will just read through and say we have received, you should have received electronically your charity bond report, the revenue collection plan, and we are not receiving a formal Master Plan Committee report today, but we did receive word that they are advertising to rehire the position that was previously held. It was the Master Plan Implementation Coordinator. There's been a change to the title of that position, but they have advertised for that, and so that's just an update in that area. Did, Mr. Crawford, did you want to go through the revenue collection?
I would.
Wonderful.
It's good news. It is. In most areas, sales tax for the January reporting period were 12,000, 12,159,589.47. This is a 5.8% increase for January. I didn't know if, prior to my arrival here, you had gotten the end-of-year actual results that showed up on this report, so I didn't want to be redundant. So the totals have actually come in from the Cato Sales and Tax Commission for the year 2014. They ended up at 119,733, as opposed to the previous year, where about 114,200,000. This is a $5,000,000, $500,000 increase. This is a, a five million dollar, uh, five hundred thousand dollar increase, so about a four-point-eight percent, which, if you remember back to your two thousand and fifteen budget, that's about what we projected them to be, was about a hundred and, or, uh, a hundred and twenty million for this year and for the end of last year. So, hopefully, we'll see that trend for this January continue throughout the calendar year, and, and we'll go up another five percent for two thousand and fifteen. The, um, point seven-five, uh, Shreveport occupancy tax that were, uh, afforded in the city was thirty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine and forty-seven cents. This is down six-point-five percent, and was seen across the board as a six-point-five percent decrease in that tax, both in Bossier and that is received from the tourist and, uh, and Convention Bureau as well. Also, in your report, you had the, uh, the public report for total collections by business class that you can look at to see what businesses, um, did well and had increases in their, uh, taxes that they're paying the city and those that had some decreases. The overall for that report increase was six hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight. And then, the final report was the revenue collections that came from finance here, which showed the two thousand and fifteen actual property tax collection to be at forty-nine million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand currently.
Well, overall, very encouraging report. There were a couple of numbers, um, that, you know, just, especially, I think it might be helpful if maybe we go over, um, maybe not in this session right now, obviously we have, um, a lot of people waiting, but, um, it may be helpful to go through some of these reports with some of the new council members who may be seeing the report in this format for the first time.
Absolutely.
Um, because there are some, um, of these, uh, lines that make more sense when you have a frame of reference. Um, some things we budget where it, uh, looks like it comes, it's budgeted the same amount every month, but there's a cyclical reason that it may all come in during one month or another, and so it's not always, um, easy to read these without a little frame of reference. So, if we may follow up with a...
Yeah, certainly, if you look at the property tax report, there's about sixty percent for the year that's come in in January. Of course, the rest of that will trickle in through the remainder of the year, and, and as this is new for some of those council members, it's new for myself as well, so, um, anything that I can do to help them out in, in giving the report, uh, more clarity, I'll be glad to do that.
And sometimes coaching is the best way to learn.
Absolutely. Thanks, Chairman.
We thank you. Does, um, any, Councilwoman Lynch?
Yeah, I have a question. I, and I, I'll, in framing the reports that you all are giving, I want to make sure that, when you say we saved two-point-three million dollars on the bond sale...
Yes, ma'am.
Is that money in the bank? Because I start spending it.
No, that's...
As soon as you say you save that.
That's over time, that's over time in debt service.
Right, you want to make sure.
That's over time in debt service.
That's not, you know, because people are gonna hear that...
Yes, ma'am.
And they're gonna say, well, why isn't this fixed? Why didn't I street fix if you all have...
I don't know.
X amount of dollars, so I want to make sure.
For over the next five years, we are not gonna have to pay back, uh, the two-point-three. When we, uh, first, um, got the bonds, we got them at an interest rate of five percent.
Right.
Then we went back out and we actually, uh, were able to, uh, go back and, um, get a lower interest rate, one-point-five percent instead of five percent, so that's where the savings come in. We don't have to pay back the two-point-three million.
Okay, so why ask me for that money?
Yeah, it's not...
Councilwoman, that's in, that's also in debt services from the ad valorem tax, so it's separate than the general fund, and, uh...
Just make sure the public understands that as we're giving this information out.
And it's part of your rollback plan, initially for the two thousand and fifteen budget, to roll those millages back from twenty-two to nineteen to save those taxpayers some funding, and, and that's part of this refinancing that helps in that effort as well.
Okay, and then on the, uh, sales and use tax information...
Mm-hmm.
That's already been budgeted.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not like money that we're...
That's correct.
Okay, make sure. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, let me use this opportunity to say this. Uh, yes, at, at yesterday's, uh, Audit and Finance Committee meeting, uh, it was very interesting, uh, and I think, Mr. Crawford, you was there.
I was.
And, and, uh, according to the, to the report from the auditor, that, uh, there's a lot of, um, revenue that, that could, that could be retrieved or collected that, that you are putting in place some provisions to do, and I want you to do that. And the reason I want you to do that, at, at the property standard hearing, there was an old lady who came here, uh, who felt like she wasn't able to, uh, pay the, uh, the work, pay for the work that was done on her property. On one hand, we're, we're letting, we're letting revenue go through the cracks without a, a, an aggressive means of collecting. On the other end, we're putting pressure on, uh, our citizens who seem to be unable to meet some of these payments. Uh, and I'm just asking that, let's be consistent, and, and let's, let's aggressively seek whatever we can seek from, from those entities that, that are, that owe us, and not let those go by the wayside, as we are aggressive in pursuing the fees and the, and the, and the, and the payments that are due us from other, other entities, especially our citizens.
And, and I think you will see that with this administration. We're gonna pursue every dime that's owed, and, uh, we will go after other dollars. So, yes.
Yeah, and I was just, I was just sympathetic to the young, I mean, the elderly lady who was really sincere in, in her ability to pay what was, what was owed, but we, you know, but, but again, that's, that's the, that comes with the territory as, as it relates to us, but, but I don't like to see us not pursue it from one entity and then aggressively pursue it from other entities. Let's be consistent in, in seeking whatever is due the city, so that we can increase our revenue and, and do the services that we need to do.
Sure, thank you. Thank you so much, Councilman Bradford. Um, and at this point, on the agenda, um, there is no public hearing today, um, so let's move on to adding items to the agenda. Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added today?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay, that being said, we are now at public comments, the long-awaited, um, arrival at public comments, um, and we have the following requests to speak. I'm going to start, um, let's see, Teresa Edgerton, and what I'll do is I'll go ahead and call up the next person whose, uh, whose form I received, so that they can begin approaching. I've got, uh, Matthew Lynn, followed by Catherine Usher. And, yes, and to remind everybody, um, just before we start, um, we will put a timer up, uh, that is for three minutes. We ask that you try to limit your comments to three minutes in order to, uh, make time for everyone to speak. If you do need additional time, just let us know, and we can grant additional time, but, um, but we're asking everybody to try to limit their comments to three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, all these, uh, comments regarding...
These comments are all regarding the Little Free Library, um, situation, and, um, if, if it's okay, I may just, uh, ask for a moment of editorial privilege to say, um, for the, uh, the body together today, um, you know, there, I, it's very understandable that this has sparked an emotional response in, um, in the citizens of the community. Please understand that nobody at this, um, uh, as a member of this body or a member of any other body, the MPC included, nobody passed a, anything against Little Free Libraries, you know. This wasn't a conscious decision, this was a new use that came up, and we're all trying to learn together, um, you know, what the appropriate way to address this is. So, um, the more positive we can work together as a community, the better we can come together with a, a good avenue forward to have, um, you know, positive uses that are progressive and new in nature, um, but do it responsibly, so that we're respectful of each other and our neighbors. And so, um, you know, we, we look forward to hearing from everybody, but please keep in mind that there's been no attack on literacy, there's no one who hates books, you know, we are, um, we really are honestly trying to, uh, come together and find a solution that allows this, um, you know, very positive, uh, activity, um, something that is unfortunate enough to have a number of Little Free Libraries close, close to and around my neighborhood, um, and there, there's something that I can attest to the fact do add to the sense of community and are, are something that's been embraced by many communities. So, we, um, welcome the opportunity to enter into a, uh, short-term fix today while we work on, uh, a long-term fix. Um, I will say that, um, every, I've had the sort of privilege of working with people on several different, that come to this angle from several different vantage points. Everyone has been very cooperative, everyone has been very forthcoming and very willing to share information and perspectives, and very appreciative of that. Um, that being said, uh, unless there's any initial questions, I will also say, the, um, I had authored a bit of an amendment to, um, the resolution that we'll be voting on today, and it would, uh, the original draft, um, only provided protections for those Little Free Libraries that were in place as of February first. The new draft, the language, um, that limits it to that, uh, has been deleted, so that it will apply to new Little Free Libraries that, um, that are added between now and when a, a final solution can be reached, so... All right, that being said, Teresa Edgerton.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Teresa Edgerton, and I reside at five-fourty-nine Wilkinson Street, seven-eleven-oh-four. I've lived in Highland for over thirty years. During part of this time, I was president of our neighborhood association, and I continue to be very active in this group and in my community. I've monitored property standards and zoning, trying to eliminate some of the problems dragging my neighborhood down. I've organized litter campaigns, worked with community-oriented police officers and T-bone teams. I've chaired the successful Highland Holiday and Garden Tours plus other events. All of these endeavors were beneficial to my neighborhood, some were more fun than others. Frankly, issues of urban blight and litter abatement are never-ending efforts. So, when I heard about the Little Free Libraries, I was excited. Finally, something I could do for my neighborhood that would also be fun for me, something that would dovetail perfectly with my love of reading. I'm a lifelong educator. I began as a classroom teacher. I have a doctoral degree with an emphasis in reading education. The last twenty years, I've concentrated on the needs of children with disabilities and those at risk because of poverty. The community-building effectiveness of our Little Free Library was immediately apparent. From the little girl who saw me as she was walking down the sidewalk, carrying an armload of books from our Little Free Library, she turned around and came back saying, "I want to thank you for having this. I get to read books I would never see otherwise. I left some books for others to read, and I left an extra book just because I wanted to." Then there was the man next door, our neighbor, who was terminally ill, who made his way slowly over to our Little Free Library. He took a couple of books and left copies of Western novels from his own collection. He has since passed away, but in his last month of life, the Little Free Library brought him some pleasure. Fast forward to January twenty-eighth, when my husband and I received our letter from the MPC. To say that we were dismayed and incredulous when we opened the citation would be putting it mildly. Subsequently, it's been pointed out that if my husband and I had only gone to the MPC, this could have been avoided. Well, my Little Free Library was hardly the first to be built in Shreveport. I had seen them in other neighborhoods and other cities, and I'm not sure a reasonable person would think, oh goodness, I need to check with the MPC to see if I can have one of those in Highland. Highland, a neighborhood that in recent months has gotten adverse publicity for our struggling schools. I'm presenting you with a petition, which I've already handed to the Assistant Clerk of Residence, uh, from my five-hundred block of Wilkinson, so that you can see my immediate neighbors support my Little Free Library. Also, I would like for all of those in attendance today who support Little Free Libraries or book swap boxes to please stand up at this time. Finally...
Oh, wow.
Finally, I want to thank Jeff Everson, my councilman, for bringing forth this resolution today as a temporary means of resolving this matter. I hope other council members will support it, so that we can move forward toward, toward a permanent and mutually satisfactory solution. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Edgerton. Next is Matthew Lynn, followed by Catherine Usher, and after Catherine, we have Nadine Charity.
Pardon my attire, I am advertising all week long for the Highland Parade this coming Sunday, which we are very fortunate to have Mayor Ali Tyler as our grand marshal, so... Yay, thank you, thank you. Today, I wear two hats. I'm gonna start off with the one end. Most of my comments, thank you for the audi, for the audience that you provide, and most of my comments are actually directed towards everybody that is here and everybody who is on camera. I'm Matthew Lynn, I'm the chairperson for the Unified Development Code. We are presently redeveloping all of the codes written in the nineteen-fifties. This is not a, a blend of new laws and a subtraction of old laws, this is a throw-away everything and add something brand-spanking-new. Um, and with that, it's my understanding that in the very near future, in the, in the following month of March, in the early part of March, that everybody who has all of this energy and desire to change the system, I could not think of a more literate bunch of people to bring forth to, to help us change these laws. And I beg every single person who has had desire with input on the Little Free Libraries to please attend our Unified Development Code meetings, because these laws are written for the people, by the people, to serve the people, and you are the people that we want at these meetings, and so please come to these meetings. This is my second hat. This particular event has been very, very close to my home, in that I know from personal experience that the more I talk, the more likely I'm going to offend one person, and if I keep talking, I'm gonna offend two people, and so on and so forth. Every single...
Are you asking me to cut your time short?
Yeah, oh, kidding. Sorry. Perfect. That, um, that every single person involved with the Little Free Library is a dear friend of mine. I mean, I have their cell phone, they have my cell phone, we hang out with each other, not every day, but fairly often. And the angles that everybody has taken to solve this problem has been a very personal angle to them, and they're want to solve the problem the way they want to solve the problem, and they should be commended, and I commend you for that. Now, what has happened is that in the angles that you take to solve a problem, there's a difference between your angle and the person next to your angle, their angle, and those, that spot, I found some friends of mine that are friends with each other, that are in a disagreement on how this is being handled, and I just want y'all to know that your friendship...
It's gonna last long, extra, extra four seconds.
Much longer, I'm almost finished, much longer than this Little Free Library, that the city council is gonna handle, the MPC is gonna handle, and that you, as the people of Caddo Parish, the city of Shreveport, are going to be able to handle with your involvement in the Unified Development Code, that you will have all the opportunity in the world to alter and have your fingerprint on it, and thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you, everybody involved in the Little Free Libraries, for your involvement in the Unified Development Code. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. And next, we have Catherine Usher. Catherine will be followed by Nadine Charity, and next on that list is Stephanie Park.
Madam Mayor and, uh, council members, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Catherine Usher, I'm a Highland resident, I've been there since ninety-one, I live at four-thirty-three Dalzell. Um, I'm also a widow, so I appreciate you speaking out about helping older women, I very much appreciate that. My husband of twenty-five years died three years ago, and when that happened, my life changed drastically. I no longer can afford to drive a car. I walk everywhere, I ride the bus, or I have a very generous friend that helps me, but it's three dollars round trip to go to the library. And that may not mean a whole lot to you, but for me right now, three dollars is a whole lot of money. And I know maybe I don't look like a widow, because, you know, sometimes looks can be deceiving, um, and I think that's what happened with the MPC. I think they got a notice that said "library" and "the Little Free Library," and I, and I think that, that maybe that's what happened. They assumed "commercial enterprise" instead of Googling "the Little Free Library" to see what the Little Free Library movement is all about, and I really appreciate the work that you've done, Councilperson Everson, um, but I, I think that the real, true, honest, progressive thing to do is for the MPC is just to say, we really messed up, we didn't do our research, never mind, go on with your Little Free Libraries. The MPC has created the goal of a master plan, and you can read it online, I'd like you to read it online, it's very well-written. In their own words, they want to, and I'm quoting right now, "Attract new residents and investment in Shreveport inside the loop, to live in vibrant, connected, walkable communities." End quote. What makes a community more vibrant, connected, and walkable than Little Free Libraries? I walk my dogs down our great tree-lined streets in Highland, and Ricky and Teresa's library, that's one of the places I go to. I love to open the little door and peek in and see what's in there. Now, I have to make my selection really quick, because the dogs, they want to go on, and they want to pee, and they want to poop, and I do clean up the poop. I'm wondering if... I'm wondering if there's a stat that says people who read more clean up more poop. Maybe that's something that we need to check out. Louisiana has a high rate of illiteracy. The national average is 15%. Louisiana is 20%. And if we want to, as the MPC Master Plan State says, and I'm quoting again, "Invest in retaining and attracting talent in a hospitable environment for entrepreneurs," end quote... gosh, we are now the city that's attacking Little Free Libraries. That is provincial, and that is not progressive. The write-ups in the Los Angeles paper, the write-ups in the Washington Post, that's provincial. We look like we are attacking libraries. And I'd like to wrap up. I want to take a little trip outside of City Hall, if you will. Just indulge me, it's going to take 30 seconds. I want to go southwest to Strand Theater. Are y'all there? Down at the Strand, the beautiful Strand Theater? Okay. I don't want us to stop where the dome is. I want us to go on Crockett. And we're standing in the middle of the street. We might get hit, so it's early morning. And I want you to look up. There's a beautiful arch up there. Bear in mind, the Strand was built in 1925. And above that beautiful arch and that window, you know what it says? "Progressive amusement for progressive people." 1925, books, free-range books, free-range Little Free Libraries. What could be more progressive, more green, more walkable, more helpful to people who are challenged by socio-economic conditions? You know, Little Free Libraries. Thanks.
Now we get to see what the back of the jacket said.
Yeah, I took my jacket off.
Thank you, Nadine. And just to remind, following Nadine is Stephanie Park, followed by Barbara Hartwell. There's Barbara.
I'm Nadine Charity. I live at 503 Broadmoor Boulevard, 71105. So I'm the first person to speak who isn't a Highland resident. I'm a Broadmoor resident. I live in the old section of Broadmoor, the triangle section. I like to call it the triangle. It's the most culturally diverse neighborhood in the whole of Shreveport. It's very walkable. I live on the corner of Broadmoor and Beverly. Schoolchildren walk by. One day, a little girl walked by my library. She looked, and she said, "Oh, look, books." I said, "Baby, you can look in there and see." I said, "I think there's one about unicorns. Do you like unicorns?" "Oh, yeah, I like unicorns. Let me see, I'll find it for you." Got it out for her. She said, "Oh, can I take it?" I said, "Yes, and when you're done reading it, you can bring it back." She said, "I might not be able to bring it back." I said, "You know what? That's okay. You can have it." Now, that's the kind of thing you don't get to do with very, very many times. I brought a list today of, before I came, right at noon, because I left my house early to get here so I could speak. I went out and I took just the front, my, mine is a little, little library, and it has two rows of books. This is some of the books that were on the front row. I did not put all these books in here. By the way, this is my neighborhood, the most culturally diverse neighborhood in Shreveport, that put these books in there. Last of the Mohicans. There are two copies of that book in there. Canterbury Tales is in there. I have a copy in my house I was going to put in, but I was kind of connected to it. Somebody put Canterbury Tales in there. There are children's books in there, there are adult books in there. There's How to Raise Your Baby is in there. It's everything that you can imagine is in that library. And that's my neighborhood speaking, and that's what I want to continue, my neighborhood's voice in my neighborhood, my walkable neighborhood. A friend dropped by. She said, "My husband died five years ago. I'm cleaning out his books. I have a book in there by one of the laureates of Shreveport. He just, his wife donated it today." You talked about Brady Blade. I have, I have books in there that Buddy Flood has requested. A neighbor drives by and said, "I need a dictionary." I was out there. I said, "I've got a dictionary in my house. Just a second. I'll go in and get it for you." We don't have that kind of conversations in Broadmoor unless we have a library. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. We've got Stephanie, followed by Barbara Hartwell, followed by Susan Fortenberry.
Hi. I'm Stephanie Park, 3833 Victory Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71104. I hold a petition with almost 2,000 signatures on protesting the initial citation against the Little Free Library. I've asked that, in the petition, that I've asked the initial decision from the MPC to the Edgertons be rescinded. The citation was issued prior to investigation of other circumstances. It was, it seemed like it was just off the hat. The privately-owned borrowing box was misclassified and considered the same as a taxpayer-funded public library, according to MPC Administrator Clark. Since I stated, since I started this petition, I noticed a quick response from the city council, and I appreciate this immensely, as do most of us do. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. I don't talk in public often. In other cities, I've noticed that these book exchanges, in some other cities, I've noticed that these book exchanges don't actually have laws that address them, and I just kind of assumed that's because everyone had common sense and used, you know, books are not bad. And if you read the current cited zoning ordinance 106-236, it states directly after the commercial activity portion, which is not defined, that these zones are "to encourage a suitable environment for family life." So what better than neighborhood libraries to add a sense of community and encourage a suitable environment for family life? We've made national news with this, and it's embarrassing. It's flat-out embarrassing to be from Shreveport right now. I think making it illegal or requiring permission for, to help a neighbor by sharing resources is not the direction y'all want to lead this city. And here's the petition. I think we're up to 1931, and that's all I got.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. If you could provide the petition to the beat right here. And we've got Barbara Hartwell coming up right now, followed by Susan Fortenberry. After that is Sammy Mears.
Hello, councilpeople. I'm Madam Mayor. Excuse me, my name is Barbara Hartwell. I live at 1105 Dalzell Street in the Fairfield Historic District. I'm very active in my neighborhood and my Neighborhood Association. I'm in support of these Little Free Libraries, and I'm baffled by one anonymous call or complaint getting so much done so quickly to shut down something that is helpful to our neighborhood, to our children, to the quality of life in the neighborhood, in the city of Shreveport. One anonymous complaint. It just blows my mind how anybody can get so much action in this city with any department with one complaint. There are roosters in my neighborhood, and we have been fighting it for six months or more.
Absolutely.
And we cannot get anything done. But one anonymous complaint against a little library that is beneficial and doesn't hurt anything, and our children can read a book or watch a video, it blows my mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. And Susan Fortenberry is next, followed by Sammy Mears, and after that is Brittany Turner and Lamont Pearson.
Hi. My name is Susan Fortenberry. I live at 460 Dudley Drive in Shreveport, Louisiana, 71104. Thank you to the council, Madam Mayor, administrative staff for hearing us today. I've resided on my street in South Highland for 27-plus years. I've operated a little "take a book, leave a book" book dispensary for more than a year, and it's been quite successful. It's just been a joy. It's connected to me, to my neighbors. We have more conversations. I meet people, I'm at the corner of Highland and Dudley. There's a lot of bikers and walkers and joggers and babies and dogs. We get out and we talk to each other. We talk about books. I find thank-you notes in my Little Library. And by the way, I know we've been talking about Little Free Libraries. That's like a brand like Kleenex is a facial tissue. I run an independent, more of a grassroots, "take a book, leave a book" unit on my property, and it's just, it's been a joy. It brings people together, and it connects the neighborhood. And I'm so thankful to the council that y'all are rescuing the situation, because I don't feel like anything should have been outlawed in the first place. I don't feel like we should have taken an approach when one person made a telephone call and said there was a rental book unit, and we found that there was not, in fact, a rental book unit. We should have just come back and said, "No, there's not a rental book unit," and that should have been the end of it. But I do appreciate the council saving the situation for us, you know, in this situation. And I do look forward to working with the MPC in the future and maybe getting it right on the next take, you know, and amending the code so that we can all enjoy that. So again, we look forward to working with y'all in the future and coming up with a code that will allow us all to keep our Little Libraries. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Susan. And I have to compliment, I do have to compliment members of the MPC Board who were incredibly responsive on this. I think it took some of them by surprise as much as it took many of us by surprise. And in fact, Levett Fuller was the one who brought it to my attention as I was walking down the street. I hadn't seen it yet on Facebook. And so special thank you to several members of their board who I know have paid this issue. And they're absolute volunteer servant, public servants. I mean, they're, they're getting no salary for the role that they play, and they were very, very responsive and have been cooperative, and I look forward to continuing to work with them to find a permanent solution here. But certainly appreciate that. The next we have is Sammy Mears, and that's followed by Brittany Turner and Lamont Pearson.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. Now, I have sat, sorry. I've sat back and I've been listening to all of this, and I also am in favor of the Little Free Libraries. And the reason is because I had heard a few times from people that had talked about these, and they sound very interesting. And when Barbara was up here earlier, and she said that a lot of people were in favor of it, and then she said, a complainer, I'm just sorry she didn't say that there was a whiner, because you have to understand that there's going to be one of them crazy ones in the bunch that just has to try to be a party pooper. And if there's one of those, you don't want no part moved. Anyway, you don't want any part of them. I think these pretty Little Libraries are really good, because if they have books like what I saw earlier, Little House on the Prairie that was up on the little paperboard and the Canterbury Tales, those are probably great. I never read that, but I do know that I did watch Little House on the Prairie dozens of times as I was growing up. My mother just loved that story on television. And I like that one about the "progressive amusement for progressive people." That really has touched my heart, so I'm sure that anybody would know that this is very important. And when I heard a couple of people at the Shreve Memorial Library whisper something good about it today, and I was there, I liked that. So I have never seen one of these. I do understand that when you do get to take a book, you get to bring it back and swap for another. So that sounds pretty good. It's kind of like vines. If you fall off with one, you can swing with another.
There you go.
That's really good. And of course, the last person that ever said that, well, that made me think what I had thought of them after they said something about "come back to Mon Junis," and, you know, I was just thinking about that today while I was over at Mon Junis, which I hope y'all have eaten at. When I was at Mon Junis, I thought about these three Little Libraries, and I do hope that they will work out. So if you think about it, it will come together. Just unify. And just forget about those whiners. Close them, close them! Heck with them.
Thank you very much, Sammy. And next I have Brittany Turner and Lamont Pearson. They'll be followed by Cooper Gibson.
Hi, my name is Lamont Pearson, and I'm a co-founder of the Little Free Library of Shreveport. I live at 938 Boulevard Street, 71104. I represented Northwest Louisiana at the 2013 Louisiana Book Festival and on the panel for Little Free Libraries. I would like to offer a profound thanks to Councilman Everson for his prompt and thoughtful efforts directed by what many contend is misapplication of Shreveport's zoning ordinances. I would like to extend our thanks to the entire city council, as we believe this is an issue that did not need to come before you at all. Despite our gratitude for these efforts, we believe certain elements of the proposed resolution are problematic. After receiving feedback from many of our Little Free Library of Shreveport Facebook members, we have now have 2,700-plus supporters, we hope to highlight some of the concerns today and urge you to revise the resolution prior to your vote on that said resolution. The final whereas of the preamble indicates, "The city zoning ordinance does not currently allow such book exchange boxes." This is inaccurate for the, the zoning ordinance is silent on the issue and provides no definition of commercial activity. Whether the MPC wishes to study sharing activities is irrelevant. We wish, or rather, we request that this section be struck. We understand that the MPC has changed its position now referencing necessary structures demonstrated by comments made by Mr. Sweeney of the Shreveport Times. The steel fails to apply as Section 106-1777 does not support this assertion that such structures must be located in the back and side yards of residences. We instead request that 106-1777 be revised to include an exception for structures intended to facilitate the free sharing of resources, in this instance, allowing, instance, allowing for more than one accessory structure and an accessory footprint that exceeds the footprint of the principal structure. We request that conflict between this section and Section 106-1181, which is art, structure, fountain, sculpture, fountains, et cetera, also be reconciled. Request that the word "book" be struck from Condition 1, allowing for other types of exchange boxes, in order to avoid a revisitation of this issue in the future. We request that Condition 4 be stricken as existing regulations regarding the size of both accessory structures and the art, sculpture, foundations, et cetera, have already, are already in place within ordinances and are incongruent with these stated measurements, which may result in further confusion. Finally, we are wary of the precedent established when the city council may intervene in MPC matters via resolution. If the city council must indeed provide this level of oversight into what should be a routine investigation, we urge you to reevaluate the current MPC policies and procedures, including, but not limited to, the imposition of the non-refundable $500 appeal fee in order to even have a case heard once initiated by an anonymous complaint. This fee is prohibited for many in our community and only further serves to widen the gap between residents and their governments. Lastly, we are extremely grateful for your consideration. We're grateful and we appreciate the support that you've stepped out on towards reading literacy as well as community. And I would like to make a personal statement that I'm brought here in part by Joe and Frank Hardy of the Hardy Boys, who inspired me to my love of reading and also book collecting. I've got these guys in my attic in my hometown in Mississippi. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Let's see, I've got Cooper Gibson. Cooper is, will be followed by Sheila McCormick. Sheila still here? Okay, there we go. Come on up, Cooper. When you get to the microphone, just tell us your name and your address.
My name's Cooper Gibson, age nine. I live in 9312 Whiskasette Strides, Shreveport, LA, 7115, District D.
Thank you so much for being here today.
I think we should have the Little Free Library in Shreveport, because it lets kids read and helps some kids and adults imagine things like a talking tree or a werewolf or going to the moon. Sharing makes people come together, and coming together builds friendship, so don't lock up tiny libraries. We help kids and adults read and think. People can read about Peter Pan or Enders Games or Space and Time, making the future better and smarter.
Thank you so much, Cooper. You're very welcome. We're lucky to be able to hear from people like that. I mean, I think sometimes, what is the saying from the mouths of babes? Sometimes when a younger person gives us their perspective, it really does kind of cut through the meat of who we are and how we feel about things. So thank you for that.
And that's why we're here, and that's why Little Free Libraries are so very important. I'm a teacher. I taught for 39 years under you. We're so happy to have you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McCormick, if you could start with your name and address.
I'm sorry. My name is Sheila McCormick. I live at 231 East Fairview, 71104. I've seen Little Free Libraries all over the country. I've seen them in the I’ve seen them in the wilderness of Montana. I’ve seen them in the Highland neighborhood. I’ve used them all over the place. As an educator, an elementary educator, a special educator for 39 years, teachers become frustrated and very conflicted because I’m also a reading specialist. We are teaching children to read, but in that, in trying to meet common core, we often lose sight of the joy and the love of reading. And the Little Free Libraries bring back the joy and love of reading because the children can choose what they want to read. I’m very thankful y’all have not limited to the ones that are already up. I think we’re doing a great job, and together, the gentleman, Mr. Young, that gave the presentation, reading is what is going to get us economically equal across the board. It doesn’t matter where we’re from. If we can read, we can better our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. And next I have Randall Lord, and that’s followed by Janie Lipscomb.
Hi, my name’s Randall Lord. I live at 10022 Yining Ridge Drive here in Shreveport. Perception isn’t everything, but it is important. I wasn’t surprised to learn that the local—in the local paper—that the MPC had attacked the Little Free Libraries. And that’s because the MPC tends to take on the position that you can’t do anything unless they expressly allow it. This is the opposite of the way a limited government should behave. I was disheartened when this story was picked up by the national media, and now perception is all across the country that we are anti-literacy here. In addition to promoting literacy, the Little Free Library is also a First Amendment issue. Please don’t waste your time or your resources fighting a fight you can’t win. Without literacy, our people, our population, and the future voters are more likely to be uninformed and uninvolved with making good decisions about their community, and are more likely to be dependent on government, and are more gullible to a tyrannical government. I’m not here to ask for forgiveness or permission. Do the right thing and reverse your decision regarding the Little Free Library, and do what you can to promote it and our liberties. Liberty isn’t having more government, it’s about having less. Thank you.
All right, now I have Ms. Janie Lipscomb, followed by Leah DeMarto.
I’m Janie Lipscomb. I live at 490 Offley Drive, 71105. But I used to live on Fairfield, and Jeff was my neighbor. And I had the first bed and breakfast stand, so I have lots and lots of experience with the MPC. Lots of experience. And most of it’s been pretty grim. And usually, all for naught. I strongly support the Little Free Libraries because I think it’s fun and generous and neighborly, and it really is—it’s a wonderful thing for our community. The people must have had as much fun building the Little Free Library as the people who get to enjoy the benefits of it. And events like this take all the fun and magic out of things. And once you do that, it’s hard to put it back in. Just not a good thing to do. As far as the fee, the last time the MPC busted me, it cost me $2,350 to prove that they were wrong. And I think that there’s—their letters are severe before they get faxed. And now that we’re redoing some of the things for the MPC, I’m sure that these are some considerations that should be addressed. But at the moment, I really support the Little Libraries, and I thank y’all for giving them a chance to exist. Thank you.
And Leah DeMarto. And I have to say that, you know, while I understand there has been—MPC over time has always had sort of a reputation of those that regulate what we can do with our land. And it’s earned a reputation over time of being a frustrating group to deal with. But I have to say that this current board of the MPC has been aggressively working to change that culture. Now, they may not have ironed out every crease, and there may still be some problems, but they have been aggressive about it. And Leah DeMarto has been presiding over that body for some time now, and I want to thank you as you come up.
Good afternoon, council members, and Mayor Tyler, and Mr. Crawford. Thank you. I’m making sure that there’s no grass being thrown at my back here. But I wanted just to—to further reiterate—I know we’ve been discussing this a lot in the last several weeks, as we should. And I just want to assure that it’s unfortunate—it’s unfortunate that the placement of these Little Free Libraries didn’t meet our current zoning ordinances. And I know that’s up for debate, and that’s why we’re here. But while many of these codes are antiquated, I think it’s—the MPC does have the responsibility to uphold the existing codes. And although not a popular opinion at this time, and they don’t particularly agree, most of the time, the citizens of our fair city are grateful for our zoning enforcement. So I just want to kind of put that. On a positive note, like Commissioner Lynn noted, this has brought to the public forefront the desperate need to update our Unified Development Code, which we have been in process for over a year doing so. And the importance of public input. I think this is actually the silver lining, as I said before, is that we do have these passionate people that know what they want in their neighborhoods, in their communities. And I want—we beg for them to come, and we hear their voice. Their voice is valued, and it’s going to be extremely important they show up for the Unified Development Code public forums. So I hope they look out for them and come and join us to change this city. I know the MPC has been blamed a lot for all the bad publicity. I can see why they say that. But I want you to know, and I want everyone to know, that as soon as we found out about it—I have a—we have a great board. We’re changing—and thank you for saying it, Councilman Everson—the culture’s changing. I know I’ve only been on the board for—this is four years and four months. Seems like 20 now, but—and I know I was—I replaced a seat on the board that was empty for three years. I wonder where the voices were then. I actually, in my own business, had to come up in front of the MPC and fight for something. So I feel the pain. I know the pain. I’ve been there. And decided—with some coercion—to join, to make some changes. And since I’ve been on there, we have had six new seats out of nine replaced with energetic, smart, community-minded people. That’s the culture change. And we’re here to do what’s right for the community. And I would just like to let you know and everyone here know about—just briefly about the members of my board. This is the board, not the staff. Ms. Levett Fuller, who is a local librarian. Mr. Alan Young, who’s in early childhood teaching, learning, development. Ms. Nancy Cooper, who’s a child advocate lawyer. Ronnie Remedies is an active progressive entrepreneur, businessman, and developer. Mr. Windsor Andrews, who is in the education field also, has retired. Dr. Philip Pennywell, well-known in the education field and has retired. Ms. Bessie Smith, retired teacher. And Mr. Dale Colvin, who was with SWEPCO, and an engineer with SWEPCO, and has been in this community for many years. You’re right. We get involved to make the change, and with this case here, we immediately addressed it and heard their voices and want to work—we’ve always been saying—we want to work and change this ordinance so we can do it—so they can do it right. We can do it right, and we can grow and have more free little libraries in this community.
Thank you so much, Leah.
You’re welcome.
We appreciate the responsiveness. And I certainly want to say—you know, you mentioned about silver linings, and I think another silver lining, obviously, from—because I think all of us have to admit, there’s been some public embarrassment about this situation, you know, for various reasons. But another silver lining has been, you know, that—the community members—you know, it has become very visible how much our community does support literacy, does support community, does support all these things that are fostered by the Little Free Libraries, and that concept of sharing and being community-minded, and you know—
And so does the MPC.
Absolutely. And to have a government body that’s been responsive and has been upfront to work with us in crafting what is a short-term solution today, but we will continue to work together for a long-term solution to this, has been encouraging. I mean, I’m sad that Shreveport may be noted for this at the moment, but I am proud that we are a community that’s come together to address it swiftly and in unity. So thank you for everybody who’s had a part in that. And I believe I have a couple of requests to speak. These are—Councilman Flurry followed by Councilman Bradford.
I don’t want to be disrespectful to you, and I appreciate you coming and saying, but why did this get to this point today? Couldn’t your board have taken an action? Now, I listen to the members on your board. Where is the common people on that board? The everyday working common person ought to be sitting on the MPC board. When you deal with MPC, it’s like dealing with IRS. You got a problem—I do not want to disrespect my chairman, who I have the highest regard to, but this ain’t no cakewalk here. These people wouldn’t be here today. This should have not gotten to this point. Somebody should have stepped forward, talked to Mayor’s office, and she could have come and said, “Look, we got a problem out there. I know you got a job. I understand that.” But it should not be here today to embarrass this city and everybody because we can’t work together. Your board has got to step forward, be more proactive, and work with people, not just sit up there on your floor and don’t consider everybody else. I thank you for coming, and I know—that’s my feeling, and I want to be heard. Thank you.
I’d be happy to answer that question, Councilman Flurry.
I appreciate it.
Right. You want to know who your common person is? It’s me. I started from ground up, a business here in Shreveport and one in Austin, and I choose to stay here in Shreveport to make it a better place. And I work hard every day, and I’m a single mother raising two teenage children in college. So I am your honest, everyday person. So is our library, and so is everybody on that board. And we’re volunteers. And I understand everybody’s frustration. You said, “Where were we?” As soon as that came out—it came out on Facebook—we’re all connected. We look, we listen, and we care. And we—I was in Austin working and called Levett Fuller, the librarian, downtown teen’s librarian, and said, “Oh, my goodness, you need to call Councilman Everson. Help me out. You’re the one that can do that.” And we did, the same day. I drove in from Austin that Friday and met with Everson at our little local establishment, beer establishment over here, and talked to the Edersons that Friday. We have never—the board has stand united since day one that we were for these little free libraries. I’ve stated it on Facebook. I stated it on the news, got misquoted on the news, but that’s okay. We are your common people, and we are diverse in age, sex, or gender, gender, and race. So I think we are—we are the people that are representing the city, and we did a good job to do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The Councilman Bradford is listed for the request to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me first express my appreciation to all of you who came out today. This is Democratic at its best.
It is.
Let me remind you that we are a country of laws and we’re a city of laws. I work in an institution where I deal with the public every day. Often times, I have to make—I have to make decisions. And sometimes it’s not favorable to the people I serve. But when it comes to my administration, all I want to know is that I follow policy and that I do my job. Did you follow the rule and did you do your job? That’s the question. Listen, things happen. Things happen. Things happen to us every day. It’s going to happen. Problems going to come forward. Things going to happen. It’s how we respond to those issues that makes us stronger. The question that came to my mind—not—in—because again, who would dispute? Who would be against having a library in your community? Who would—? But the question is, did the MPC do their job according to the law of this city? That’s the question. And obviously, they did because we’re here today to respond to the issue, and we’re going to respond favorably to it to get it corrected. So I’m just saying that, you know, let’s be—let’s be understanding of everybody. You know, things going to happen, but it gives us an opportunity to come back stronger and more united and more vigilant in doing what’s right for this city. Okay? There’s an issue with the—with 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 the way the law is written. We’re going to correct that, Mr. Chairman. And the MPC responded to it as they understood it. So I’m not—I’m not defending the MCC, but my question was to them, did they do their job? If they’ve done their job, then we will respond to the way that we should do our job. And at the end of the day, hopefully, we will bring resolve to this that is—that will eliminate this and let us continue to create wholesome events, wholesome activities that will, again, make this city strong. And I think after this meeting—because again, I’d love to see citizens come out and express themselves. But at the same time, let’s leave here resolved to do better and to work in harmony to bring all types of wholesome events and activities, and book clubs and libraries to all of our communities. I want one in my community. I’m going to work toward getting one in my community. So thank you for your work, and I’m comfortable—because if you didn’t do your job, then we wouldn’t be here to address the resolution that we’re going to address today, to temporarily fix this. And then we’re going to consult with our legal people, and we will hopefully write a legislation that will forever put this issue to rest, not only for Holland but for all of Shreveport who is interested and who is willing to accept the responsibility of helping our children learn. And that’s what it’s all about at the end of the day. Let’s help children learn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Councilman Everson.
Thank you so much, Leah. Yes, that concludes the public comment portion. I have no other requests. Now, for those of you who may be new to the council meetings, there is another public comment section that comes later in the meeting. So if you signed up for one and you haven’t had an opportunity to speak yet, that will be addressed later in the meeting. And at this point in time, we have no confirmations or appointments to be considered today, so we can move on to the consent agenda. So we can move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Thompson, are there any items to be adopted under consent agenda today?
There's one item. Resolution 17, motion to adopt it would be in order.
So moved to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Seconded by whom, Mr. Chairman?
I believe that was Councilman Bradford.
Thank you.
And I'm still waiting on Councilwoman Lynch. And that passes unanimously adopted. Now, Mr. Thompson, please proceed with regular agenda legislation.
We're now under resolutions on second reading and final passage. Resolution 15 authorizes the acceptance of a donation of exercise equivalent for Shreveport Police Department workout facility.
And it looks like Councilman Bowman.
Seconded by?
Oh, that was seconded by Councilman Corbin.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. And that is passed unanimously.
Resolution 18 was adopted earlier. Resolution 19 suspends the effect of certain provisions of Chapter 106 relative to zoning to temporarily allow certain book exchange boxes to remain in place and in use and do otherwise provisions.
And I would like to move to adopt the substitute resolution on the agenda. This substitute resolution, as a point of information, is the one that I referenced earlier that allows for the protection of little free libraries that may not exist currently. And that is passed unanimously.
Resolution 20 allocates funds to a specific not-for-profit organization for funds budgeted in other charities.
Second.
And that is a motion by Councilman Bradford, seconded by Councilman Flurry.
Discussion.
It sounds like we have a point of discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I commented yesterday, I don't believe that support of this is fair to the other organizations who have asked for money out of the Riverfront Fund. So I will be voting no on this.
Okay. It looks like we are.
Voting?
Yeah.
So we can get the question?
We are, yeah. Unless anybody else, I have no other comments that have been adjusted. So it looks like we are four to two. It passes four to two.
We're under Resolution 21. It authorizes the institution of expropriation proceedings against certain described property. Mr. Chairman, we've been notified by the city attorney's office that we need to postpone this, that we would ask for.
Postpone.
Seconded by the chair. And that is a motion to postpone Resolution Number 21 by Councilman Corbin, seconded by the chair. It looks like we've got all our votes in. And that is passed unanimously.
We're now into introduction of resolutions. We have one. Resolution 22 declares certain city property to be surplus.
So moved. And that is a motion by the chair, seconded by Councilman Corbin. And we have unanimous passage.
We're now into introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to February the 24th. Ordinance 10 amends the 2015 capital improvements budget. This is for nine new airport projects. 11 amends the 2015 Airport Enterprise Fund budget. Number, ordinance number 12 amends the 2015 General Fund budget. Ordinance 13 amends the 2015 Downtown Entertainment Economic Development Special Revenue Fund budget. Resolution 14 amends the 2015 budget for the Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance, it's ordinance 14 if I say resolution. Ordinance 15 amends the 2015 budget for the General Fund. And those are all.
Is there a motion for introduction? Motion by Councilwoman Lynch, and seconded by Councilman Corbin. And unanimous approval for introduction of those ordinances?
We're now into ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance number six declares the city's intention to acquire.
Second.
Certain adjudicated properties for community development Concordia Place project.
Motion by the chair, seconded by Councilman Corbin. And it looks like unanimous passage.
Ordinance number seven closes and abandons a portion of the dedication for Ellaby Church Road and the Ellaby Road Estates, Unit 4 subdivision. It's in Section 8 Township, 16 North, Range 13.
Second.
And that is a motion by Councilman Corbin, seconded by Councilman Bowman. And that is adopted unanimously.
Zoning Ordinance C-5-15. Rezones property located on the north side of John Crew Drive.
Second.
And that is a motion to adopt from Councilman Bradford, seconded by Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Bradford?
Mr. Bradford, I didn't register your vote. Thank you. That passes unanimously.
Ordinance number nine, rezones property located on the north side of Rutherford Street, 300 feet west of Fairfield Avenue.
Second.
Motion by the chair, seconded by Councilman, Councilman Flurry. Right, okay. And that's unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, those are all of the items on the regular agenda for consideration. I'm not aware of any matter to be removed from the table.
Okay. And let's see, that brings us to.
Mr. Chairman, on the, we have one appeal case, C-8-15. We received a letter from Ms. Caroline Newland pursuant to the agreement arranged between the applicant and the Emberwood homeowners executive committee. I hereby withdraw my appeal. So the appeal has been withdrawn.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to remove this item from our agenda.
Second.
And would like to just quickly say that I appreciate the applicant, as well as the folks that filed the appeal, for coming together in numerous meetings and making this work out. I think they're going to end up with a good development that the neighborhood can live with. And I applaud their effort. And Mr. Sweeney facilitating meeting and his staff, helping get through this process.
And that is truly good to see. For those in the audience who may not have the reference, this is an issue that had some ongoing discussion for quite some time. And to see the parties come together on an agreement that results in an appeal being withdrawn is an encouraging, encouraging thing. Frankly, I'd like to see that replicated even more in the near future.
Mr. Chairman, who seconded that motion?
I did, I believe.
Thank you.
That is adopted unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we're now into reports from officers' boards and committees.
Correct. Do we have any reports from officers, boards, and committees? If you could, I think, Councilman Corbin. And I know there was a recent meeting today. I don't know if there needs to be an update from that or not. But we'll start with Councilman Corbin.
Very briefly, the Audit and Finance Committee met for the first time this year yesterday. And we heard information about audits that were finished up in the last quarter of 2014. Got some good information. And there's still some information yet to come because we had some time constraints. But I think we're off to a good start. And was encouraged to hear the responses to the audits that were presented yesterday.
Absolutely. It was a good meeting. If only we had had more time. There was a lot going on during that meeting. Lots to take in. And this brings us to.
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Oliver.
Okay, so we did meet with the Risk Committee today. And as a function of that, we're going to set up an executive session either Monday or Tuesday before our next meeting, based on the administration's calendar. Brian or Terry, or somebody's putting that together. So we will see that in our future schedule.
Got it. Thank you for that update. And I will say, I have a proposed time or two for a couple of upcoming committee meetings. I'll be sending that out in the next day or so. So, you know, if any other council members looking to try to schedule meetings, certainly just let us know.
We will. Appreciate it. What's that? My committee will be meeting.
Wonderful, wonderful. Just let us know so we can, we'll kind of keep track of it a little bit and make sure that we can have somebody there to take minutes. We also find ourselves now at the highlight of everyone's meeting, at the Clerk's Report.
Chairman, I do have a report. We received a number of appointments to various boards and committees from Mayor Tyler today. I don't have them in front of me, but I sent them upstairs so that they could be sent to you by email. And you would have all of the information. And they will be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Wonderful, wonderful. And I don't see, you said you received them, Oliver? I haven't received them yet, but does it mean they're not on their way?
There is somebody.
From there. Oh, this one. I see it now. Got it. Thank you. So is there a motion for the council to resolve itself in the committee as a whole?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Corbin, seconded by Councilman Jenkins. And that passes unanimously.
So moved on approving the minutes.
And I'll second by the chair. That's a motion by Councilman Jenkins, seconded by the chair, to approve the minutes of January 27. And that passes unanimously. And let's see, at this point, Ms. Mayor, do you have any communications?
No.
And keeping us moving right along, does any member of the council have any communications at this point? I have got Councilwoman Lynch, Councilman Jenkins, and Councilman Corbin.
I just wanted to thank the mayor for the tour that we took last week on the, I guess it was kind of a combination, property standards, litter, debatement, tour, just tour throughout the city. I think we hit every district on the tour. And we're just, you know, moving forward together, working together. That's the thing I'm hearing from my constituents across the city. They want us to work together. And they're very excited that we are working together and toward moving our city forward. So thank you and look forward to our constituent to work with you on that initiative.
Thank you so much.
And Councilman Jenkins, you're next.
Okay. A little bit of a request and seconded a little bit of notification. There's a group interested in pursuing a cleanup of the bayou south of the Duck Pond, between, let's call it, King's Highway and Southfield Road. That kind of section of the bayou there, slash pond, whatever you want to call it. I believe Shreveport Green's going to be involved. Rodmore Neighborhood Association, Captain Tree Neighborhood Association, maybe a troop of Boy Scouts. Because it is so close to King's Highway in terms of where people might have to stand to start off, one request, and I'm also working with a member of the Sheriff's Department, would be to see if we could get maybe some auxiliary police to close off just the west, the easternmost section of maybe 300 or 400 yards of East Kings there as it tees into 70th. Just an idea, just to prevent any other, and if that is a bad date or not a good thing, you know, let me know. And we could maybe flex date because we do have six weeks from now, or five weeks from now, at least with this proposal. Other thing would be, in the past, when we've done some cleanups in the Duck Pond area, we've had a little support from Public Works to pick up the trash and garbage that we pick up and bulk it there. And then somebody comes by and picks it up for us. Stan is familiar, I believe. He's helped us with one of these projects before, a couple of years ago. So I guess at this point, it's kind of a request. And happy to, you know, work with any kind of ideas. Our plan, as we speak right now, and it's very loose in formation, to start about 9:00 in the morning on that Saturday morning and be done by noon. Naturally, anybody wants to get involved, we'd love to have them. But there are some supportive things that would help from the city. And, you know, we can tailor it however y'all see best way to manage it, et cetera.
All righty. Can we get some additional information, a contact person? So that we know who to contact? You.
Got you. I got it.
Myself and Deputy Sheriff Middleton, Mike Middleton, is involved on the other side. And he's on the Shreveport Green Board.
All right.
And so that's kind of, he's approached me about it. I think it's a great idea. And we've done different parts over the last four years. So this is an area we hadn't gotten to yet.
What was the date again, Councilman?
That is March 14th, I believe, is the Saturday. That's initial proposal. If that's a terrible date, we could move it a week, one way or the other day.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you. I have, next, I've got Councilman Corbin, and then Councilman Bradford followed.
I just wanted to recognize that February is an awfully busy month with Mother Gras and Black History Month. And I wanted to congratulate our city workers who are going above and beyond to accommodate the multiple parades and the cleanup. Guys from Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, and I'm sure many other departments that I've not mentioned. But they're giving up their time and time away from their families to go and clean up. And I was out on the parade course, the Centaur Parade Course, early Sunday morning. And you could hardly tell anything had happened. And I know it will be the same next week. But hats off to the job well done.
I have got to echo that. I happened to be along one of the parade routes the day after one of the parades this past weekend. And you are absolutely right. You could not tell that hundreds of thousands of people had lined those streets and had, you know, fun and celebrated at an event where part of the event involves throwing things out into the open. You know, I mean, it was literally spotless. It was amazing. So definitely want to thank the city employees that did that. Councilman Bradford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, let me express my appreciation to the mayor, Mayor Tyler, and to her personal involvement in Shreveport and Drainage for their timely response to Mrs. Lola Hancock on Audrey Lane, 2800 block of Audrey Lane. She wanted me to express also her appreciation that that problem with water getting in the house, I think, is solved. I think the elevation and the work that was done on that area solved the problem there. But she asked me to ask you, I think you sent maybe Community Development, somebody out there to see if there was something else could be done as relates to the damage inside the house.
Yes.
And I was wondering if that was an opportunity for us to address. And if it will, else, then will you have someone to follow up on that with her?
We will do that. We've actually already spoken to Ms. Moore. So we will follow up to see if there is anything that we can do to assist her.
And I've been getting great response from the administration and my district needs. And I appreciate that. I really do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I believe the last request I had to speak in this section is Councilwoman Lynch.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, particularly for my constituents, two issues that I'm already working on is the street repairs at Illinois Street and Kennedy Avenue. Got some calls about that. Currently, there's a detour, but we're on top of it. And the situation on Florence Street in Newtown. So we're on top of that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. At that point, that concludes our communications from council members. And now we move on to public comments. And I do have some requests to speak today. We're going to start with Craig Lee. And oddly enough, I will say, when they handed me the stack of requests to speak, somehow one from Mr. Lee from last time or something was in it. So I had two from him, but double the pleasure, double the luck. There we go.
I've been talking to him, man. He want me to talk for 30 minutes.
Stephanie will not be able to talk more than three. Because no matter how many you put in, you just send three.
Let me shut me down. Craig Lee, 1035 Eustis Street. First off, I want to thank all of the supporters of the Little Library. It is good to see community activism, even on an issue that some people might say is trivial. I think it's important whenever somebody deems an issue important for the supporters of that issue to come out. So we're challenging other folks on these particular issues to come out. Next council meeting, I'm going to make a formal presentation on something that Councilman Bradford has already brought up in terms of the fight for economic parity in the city of Shreveport. Mr. Calvin Young gave some powerful statistical data. Mr. Calvin Young gave some powerful statistical data today. I'm going to have a statistical report that was put together back in 2001. I compiled that data to basically show that the city of Shreveport Contract Procurement Program historically had been representing black business owners with about 3% of contract procurement opportunities, and we're talking about out of hundreds of millions of dollars. That particular program, Karen Barnes has been doing as best job she can, but the program was really designed to fail. And the reason that that is, you don't have enough manpower in that program. You're supposed to have investigators. There's a lot of stuff that's supposed to go into that program. It's bad enough that the program was structured on a race neutral alternative suggestion versus a race conscious remedy. So these are some of the things that I'm going to be bringing to the council to alert you guys as to what Councilman Bradford talked about. In 1996, when Roy Barrio sat on his council, he was able to get a 7-0 vote for a disparity study done, which is better known as a factual predicate study. It passed 7-0, but Mayor Bo Williams vetoed. And once the powers that be were able to educate the poor white council persons as to the power of the disparity study, it came back 4-3 against. And that has been the perpetual fight. In order to actually move the city of Shreveport forward, you're going to have to get more economic parity as it relates to these contract procurement opportunities. Because when you look at situations like the convention center, you didn't even have a good $2 million that was let to black business interests. And this has basically been the status quo of Shreveport. Michael Allas, formerly of Slack Allas, and Mayor once asked me, he said, "Well Craig, why aren't more black business owners bidding on the contracts for the stadium and whatnot?" And I said, "Mr. Allas, let's stop playing games. You know what the reason is. When you have a liquidated damages clause that says if you don't finish the work in time, $5,000 a day, I mean, who can afford that? And then once the bidding process is done, now the liquidated damages clause is over with it." So there are a lot of clever ways that...
Wrapping up?
Yeah, I'm wrapping up. But there are a lot of clever ways that these things are going on in terms of discriminating against not only black business owners, but also poor white business owners, because the one thing is that it's already set aside is that 95% of most of these contracts are going to go to majority white male firms. And so this is going to be a challenge that we push forward as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Mr. Kenneth Craft.
Kenneth Craft at 157 Archer Avenue. I like my OJ, my vitamin C will help you with cleanup. ISIS Invest Shreveport Improved Streets. That's the good ISIS. ISIL, the bad ISIL is Investigates Shreveport's Illegal Libraries. Oh. Six years ago today, I stood here in front of that council and suggested a citizens committee be formed in a year or so to do a possible general obligation bond issue on streets and drainage and bridges. We formed in 2010, a year later, February of 2010, so five years ago. We met, we debated, we proposed, we got a resolution to the council and we did 175 million successfully in three propositions on, whenever it was, Oliver, help me out, April 2nd of 11. April 17th. No, 2nd, 17th was the school board. That was Ms. Tyler's. I'm getting my dates mixed up. We need to do it again. We need to start thinking and get together and in about a year, probably about this time in 16, it will have been by that time, five years since the last one. We've got a lot of needs and let's get that going. Like Todd Beamer said, you know, let's roll, let's let the vehicles roll. And 35 years ago, when I was being interviewed and I said, one of the, I was asked to recommend five things why I should be hired, and I said, "Well, we need a new city jail," and we took care of that and we need 10% operating budget reserve. We got there and then we backslid, so we need to get back closer to it. We needed a three-year operating budget reserve. We got that, I mean, operating budget plan. And put EMS and fire, and paramedics and fire, and after the Plumlee Fiasco, we finally saw the light and went there. The last thing was paved 182 miles of old dirt streets with all courtesy to Councilman Shine, not 128, 182. And one thing about this council, I'm going to say something for Mr. Flur, he's not my councilman, but that was well said, sir. Well said. It never should have come to you. In 84, about this time, there was a whine, like Sammy said, there was a complaint about a lemonade stand on 179 Albert. It was illegal, it was against the code. The executive director of the MPC, Steve Pittkin, got a courtesy copy of the memo and he said, "No, that's knuckleheaded. You don't shut down a lemonade stand. I don't care what the code said." The reason the neighbor was complaining is the neighbor's dog was barking, so he complained about the child's nickel, nickel a cup lemonade stand. Let's not forget lemonade and Kool-Aid stands in the new MPC code, because they are commercial enterprises and we might have to go bust the lemonade sellers unless we change the code. Y'all are going to have a lemonade case in front of you one day.
Actually, and I'm not joking here, it is referenced in the current code now. It looks like after that event, they must have, they must have accommodated it, because the current code does actually account for lemonade stands now. At some point, that had to have been an issue. I didn't know the backstory, but it must have been. Next speaker we have is Pastor Mays.
It was on Kinsley.
What's that? Oh, yeah. And following Pastor Mays is Rob Bruceart.
Pastor Mays, 335 East Azalea, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71104. To the Honorable Mayor Tyler and to the city council, thank you for your service. Just want to tell some of my brethren in the Stoner Hill area that we are going to have a meeting at the last week in March. So those brothers that's watching us, we want, I want to make sure that all of the pastors be there for that particular meeting, and we're going to detail what it's going to be about. What I'm here for today on is I am in support of the Live Free Library. And I'm also concerned about something that we all should be concerned about. We have for quite some time, has been asking, we know that it did not get passed in the state. When it went to the senate, it didn't get passed. It passed in the House, but not in the senate. We've been asking for a citizen review, review board panel to have insight and oversight of investigations concerning our police department. There is something wrong and we know it. We can either tackle it, because I don't believe, as a pastor, I am for the police, I think we have some good police officers, but I don't believe that you can have a record where no police officer that has been involved in using excessive force has not been convicted nor reprimanded. Something is wrong. There's a disconnect somewhere, because nobody is right all the time. I'm not against police officers. My brother-in-law is one in Texas. But my thing is, is that I can go down a list of African-American men at the hands of police officers in this city that has suffered excessive use of force by police officers. So my councilman, Councilman Everson, and the other councilmen, it seemed to me something is wrong, because I saw the chief come up a few minutes ago. Either, I want someone to explain to me that how is it, or give me the statistics that shows what officers have been convicted, prosecuted for using excessive force. I know the answer. None. Even a wrong clock is right twice a day. Something is wrong. But these issues, I guess human life is not that important. So, you know, we pass it by and we look over it and we seem like it doesn't matter until it happened to someone in our family. To get ready to wrap it up, I also want to ask that you pray for the family. My time is running out. Pray for the Henderson family that I prayed for on the news the other day. We had a bunch of people of all ethnicities came out, supported the young baby that got ran over right there in the Highland area.
So glad you mentioned that.
And the family, the family, I know them well. They know me. We love each other. We're going to continue to support each other. And it was an unfortunate incident that happened, but I ask that you councilmen please pray for that family, that nothing like this would ever happen again in our community. And I ask that you consider that citizen review panel, it can be done within the reins of the Shreveport Police Department. And we gave each one of you all a list of how this board would be made up. We already got the board members in place that will look into some of these events, looking to it and make sure that the officers are following proper procedure. I'm not against officers, I'm just for rights. So with that being said, with this new council, please, Mayor, I dropped off the information by your desk, I wrote it myself, and I gave it to some of the other council members, whether they read it or not, I don't know, but it's there. If you need another copy of it, I got it here again. But we need to consider that, that too many young African-American men are being shot and killed and no officer, as of this day, has ever been prosecuted or reprimanded for using excessive force. Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you. All right. Rob Bruceart is next, and following Rob is going to be, I believe it's Jeffrey Jackson? Am I reading that correctly? Mr. Jackson still here? Mr. Bruceart, thank you.
I'm Rob Bruceart, 451 Sanford, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71105. Ms. Tyler, Mr. Everson, council members, I want to wear two hats here real quick. First, Mr. Jenkins will be glad to help. The Broadmoor Neighborhood Association will be glad to help with the Duck Pond thing. As the new president of the Neighborhood Association, I want to, I want to talk a little bit about education here, and I want to point out that through the NIP monies, the Broadmoor Neighborhood Association has donated over $58,000 to our neighborhood schools in the last 10 years. $58,000 in support of those schools. And in doing so, this bond issue that's coming up, there's always multiple sides of every story to look at, and the Broadmoor Neighborhood Association and many of you have been before us in running for office. Y'all know that we have open forums where we encourage everybody to come and speak so that we can give the best information possible to our neighborhood and citizens so that they can vote intelligently on issues that come before them. So on the 24th of this month, the last Tuesday of February, our board meeting starts, our Neighborhood Association meeting starts at 7:00, and we would like to extend an invitation to all of the council members to come and listen to Mr. Elliot Stonecifer speak at this meeting about this bond issue. Last month, we had Dr. Gary Joyner, who was hired by the school system to do the demographics. He spoke at that meeting. This month, we're going to listen to Elliot Stonecifer. Next month, we're hoping to meet with all of the, as many preachers in town as we can so that we can, we can hear the point of view from people of God, you know, in that endeavor. Now, I'm going to put on my other hat, as a citizen, a parent of kids that have gone through the schools in our system, bricks and buildings do not equate student achievement. We can spend money, as we have done historically, in 07, and, I'm sorry, 97 and 2004, we spent millions of dollars renovating and building new wings. Did student achievement go up? I challenge you to look that information up, and you're going to be surprised at what happened with the test scores in the cattle pair schools. Closing small elementary schools is not the answer. All of us here represent districts that have little schools in them. When you start closing those schools, you kill your neighborhoods. When you kill your neighborhoods, you kill economic development, taxation, you kill that community spirit that's involved. We support education. I support it. But I support, like, if they're going to close those three little elementary schools, I think we need to consider rebuilding an elementary school in one of those areas that's where the neighborhood and the neighbors work together as a unit. And by building schools, you will have people come to them. Dr. Gori has said, "If you build it, they will come." I believe that in the neighborhoods. I believe that we need to reinvest in those, in those little neighborhoods. Let me, I'll close as quickly as possible. We also have data and statistics that we can offer you when you come to our meeting to support a different look at this bond issue. When Dr. Gori and them came, it, I took about an hour to do his presentation. It's very difficult to come up here and talk about an issue in two minutes. Okay? So please come to our Neighborhood Association when we start talking about rightsizing schools. Let's include all schools, because if you don't include all schools, then, then if you're only going to attack the little, the little elementary schools and leave the high schools alone, then there's a problem. So we, let's use the same language and the same method of examining schools for closure on all levels, elementary, middle school, and high schools. So I thank y'all for your time. Thank you, Mayor, for your service in our educational community too.
Thank you, Mr. Bruceart. The next, the next person that I have for public speaker, I mean, for public comments is Jeffrey Jackson. Is Jeffrey Jackson? Okay, I think he may have left. Want to give him an opportunity if he is back there. The next public comment request that I have is Mr. Robert Thomas. I saw Mr. Robert Thomas earlier, but I don't see him right now. He's gone. And then the last one I have is Mr. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I'd like to first of all say that I want to comment on Councilman Willie Bradford for what he said earlier. Things happen to us every day of our lives. The big question is how do we respond to it? That's the important thing, which is something that I can testify to from yesterday, because I kind of made a mistake when I should have called Mon Junis and let them know that I was coming to get something to eat. Well, unfortunately, that was my mistake, because I didn't realize that they were closed. They had a note up that said they would be opening up today at 10:30 a.m., and the reason was that their bridge was out and the food had to be taken across the street to another place called Jackman's Cafe to be stored, or otherwise it would ruin. So yesterday, I found myself a little, not totally upset, just a little confused. I thought I might just go home and feel dull, but I didn't. And I could have gone fish headed just to be upset, but I didn't. What I did was I went on over to Alan's Grill and got something there to eat. And I'm sure everyone's been to Alan's Grill. If you haven't, hope you will.
Alan's is great.
It is. I should know. That food went right into me. The food, it went right into me. So anyway, I enjoyed yesterday and then I went back to Mon Junis today and they were open. So I went on ahead and found whatever table I wanted, ordered spaghetti and meat, one meatball, salad, toast with the sauce that they bring out, and then a cold drink to enjoy my meal. I've been there a few times before. I love it. So if anyone has not been to Mon Junis, and Jeff, I'm sure that maybe you and James have, if anyone else has not, give it a try, because I think you'll like the food that they have there. I would note, today that food went right into me. So when I walked out of the restaurant to come on down here, someone asked me, "Did you eat your food?" I said, "Yes, I poured it right into me." And they said, "Not like..." And I said, "No, not like." I don't do that. I ate my food accordingly and I enjoyed it and I enjoyed my drink. The only thing was that they had an extra for me, since I couldn't drink two at the same time, they went on ahead and put it in a to-go cup. When I got to the library and did a little book reading, I could enjoy it then. You get a chance to go to Mon Junis, try it. You'll be glad you did.
Thank you, Sammy.
Thank you, Sammy. And let's see, at this point, that's the conclusion of the public comments, the requests that I have. So what I'd like to do is ask us to... So, what I'd like to do is ask us to reconvene, but instead of calling the meeting to adjourn, we have gotten some information, it's come to our attention, that one of the resolutions that we postponed actually can be considered today, and that's Resolution Number 21. So, if there is a motion to reconsider Resolution 21, and I've got a motion from Councilwoman Lynch, seconded by Councilman Corbin.
Mr. Bradford?
Mr. Bradford, I think you didn't take your vote yet. And that is unanimous adoption of Resolution Number 21, and at that point, I think the committee rises their report.
No, no, no. You need a motion to adopt.
We made a motion to... I'm sorry, I'm skipping ahead in my mind. We've been sitting in this same chair for a while, go ahead.
Resolution 21 authorized the institution of expropriation proceedings against certain described property in connection with the city of Shreveport's Wallace Forest Main Project. In other words, provides with respect there.
And that is a motion from Councilman Corbin, seconded by Councilman Flurry. And now that is passed unanimously, and now we're where I want to be. Committee rises their report, we call this meeting adjourned.